Into this conversation. I haven't gone through the whole lot of you's line managers, so this morning I would like to do that. And after lunch, we will go into, I will be meeting with the board chairman and probably a couple of board members. What a board and P N Z power. And hopefully we get some arrangements in place this afternoon with P N Z power and Modulon Hospital. A lot of the issues that you highlighted to me. I see that most of it has got to do with communication breakdown. That's what I learnt in Angau. And this is what I'm beginning to see in Madang. We have a brand new crop of leaders in the P H A management now. And I think if we can pick up on our conversations, everyday conversations, talking and sharing ideas, discussing issues of importance for the hospital, we can get along well with the fact that we have issues with, major issues with manpower and power and water and consumables and drug shortages, but if we can talk, if we can have a constant dialogue amongst ourselves, most of these issues will be ironed out. That's what I believe in and that's what I see. But this morning, I would like to ask the rest of you's floor managers again to share with us your bad experiences, the issues that you see that needs attention in terms of, again, manpower, consumables and drugs, utilities, finances. So we're gonna get through that. And anyone else in the audience that you need something that you think it's very important to bring to the attention of the committee, then we will give you an opportunity to do so. With regard to the pharmacy, the person responsible pharmacy, I would like to know the process you used to before P H A came into being and the process that is currently that you are going through. So just, I want, I just want to see the difference. Why is it taking too long to procure urgently needed specialist drugs compared to what we used to previously before P H A? So that's what I want to hear from your perspective. So thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We shall start. Switch on your microphones, introduce yourselves, your position, and how long have you been with the hospital for? Thank you.
Alright. But thank you, member for Bogia and the chairman for the Special Parliamentary Committee on Health Matters. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to actually raise issues that we faced as an organization and propose to you possible ways on how we can improve and move the Madang Provincial Health Authority forward into the future. Alright, I'm John Mac Jeremiah. I've been working at Madang Provincial Health Authority for the last fifteen years. I joined the hospital in twenty ten. Having joined the hospital, I worked as the O Y C for pharmacy for some time. Then got promoted to deputy director for medical services. I also served as the acting director for medical services and the director for corporate services under the hospital arrangement before the P H A came on board. Right, when the P H A came on board, I served as the hospital administration manager and now I'm serving as the hospital executive manager. I think I have quite a number of issues I'd like, I will be mentioning that covers the old hospital, the new P H A system and some ways forward, alright. Having experienced in those years, I've worked with the-
Sorry, I'll interrupt. You will just go through introductions first and then later on we'll start with your insights into the operations. So let's just introduce ourselves first.
Good morning once again, chairman and my name is Michael Kuri. I am an emergency physician, covering the emergency medicine and emergency services in the hospital and also in the province. And also working as acting manager of medical services for the hospital management as well. I worked in here as a training resident for two years, went back for further trainings and came back as a specialist, serving in here for two years now. And as in the capacity of emergency services and for the capacity in the role of medical manager role for exactly about ten months now. Thank you.
Good morning Chair. My name is Johnson. Your name is Makain. And I am the acting laboratory manager at the Madang Provincial Hospital, Madang P H A.
Lab manager?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
I've been working for almost six years now. So I run the clinical laboratory service at the provincial hospital, the blood transfusion services as well and the other diagnostic service like a T V and H I B in the provincial hospital.
Are you a doctor by profession?
Not doctor, not medical doctor, but allied health.
Allied health, okay, okay. Thank you. Next.
Thank you, honorable member. My name is Grace Iboz. I am the hospital pharmacist and provincial pharmacist at the same time. I'm carrying two caps. I worked at Modulon General Hospital for sixteen years. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Good morning. Honorable Nakuri. My name is Gabriel. My surname is Benia. I've been the facility manager for the last fifteen months after working for fifteen years so far now in other sections in the hospital. Thank you.
Gabriel who?
Gabriel Benia, B E N I A.
Thank you. Okay, let's start. Go through your details of the issues that you see in the hospital.
Thank you once again. My presentation will be guided by the scope of the inquiry. I think the paper that has been sent out to us, I will touch on all those issues, highlight those issues as well. Alright, first of all, let me make a few remarks on the governance and leadership issues. Alright. The establishment of the provincial health authority, the way I personally see it is to improve the health system in the province by getting together the provincial health office previously under the provincial government and the provincial hospital, the Modulon General Hospital into one agency that is responsible for driving all health matters from the national level down to the provincial level and all the way to the district level. I think this new system was introduced because of the introduction of the P H A Act. Alright, one of the challenges we face, having mentioned the intention of the P H A Act to drive services from not only in the hospital but right all the way down to the lowest level facility is to do with the P H A Act. I think most of the issues have been mentioned by the CEO yesterday, but I'd like to mention only one of those issue here. And that is when you look at the P H A Act under the Curative Health Services Directorate where the hospital reports directly under. The scope of the Act, Act doesn't allow the hospital to provide services in terms of specialist services, clinical services, all the way down to the lower level facility. The Act confines curative health services, patient care services within the hospital facility only. So that's one of the biggest challenges we face in terms of delivering health services, especially clinical care. When we have our specialists having intention to drive services all the way down to the lower level health facilities. So I think that's, that's one of the impacts of the P H A Act. And my recommendation is for the health department, for the government of the day to review the P H A Act. Although the intention may be good, but the operational methods are a challenge to us as we intend to drive the services down to the rural health facilities.
Doctor, I'm gonna intervene, interrupt you for a while. I, I need to understand this a little bit more. So you are advising the committee that under the Act, under the P H A Act, you doctors cannot bring curative health services down to the districts. Your, the Act, the Act only allows you to perform your curative health services within the hospital. Is that what you're telling the committee?
That is correct.
Okay, continue.
Alright, I think that's, that's about it on the, alright. The other thing I'd like to mention also is the, for every organization, as long as it's a government agency, the organization must have a corporate plan. And that is, that is very important for every organization, every institution of the state to have a corporate plan. I think we've been facing challenges since the inception of P H A in Madang. We're still struggling to have a P H A corporate plan in place. And I think that's something that we must improve on as an organization.
So you're telling me that there is no corporate plan for P H A Madang for the last six years?
There is no corporate plan for the last six years until after the board was sworn in. And now we have a draft copy that needs to be vetted and approved by the board.
So there was never a plan?
No.
Okay.
Alright, let me proceed on with some relevant laws that have implication on how we deliver services, alright. Under the previous hospital arrangement, we have a Public Hospital Charges Act that paves way for us as a hospital to charge certain fees for certain services that we, we deliver in the hospital. Alright, that fee, the Charges Act has never been reviewed up until now. And I think one of the recommendations that I want to put forward is for the health department to take on board and review the Public Hospital Charges Act. And probably if the P H A Act can be reviewed and a clause in the P H A Act to also indicate the relevance of the Public Hospital Charges Act into the P H A Act as well. Because we still charge minimum fees for services we offer at the hospital. And in the previous arrangement in the hospital, we give what is called a trust account where all this internal revenue are packed under. Alright, and instrument says that the trust account is to be used for patient related expense only, not anything outside of that. So when there's a need for referral, if there's an emergency referral for a patient to put mostly, the process to raise the cheque is slow. So what we do is we go straight to the trust account, get the signature to sign the cheque, get quotations, sign cheques, allowance for our doctors, referring doctors or health workers, plus the patient and then referrals are done on the spot. That also includes if there's any emergency needs for medical supplies, medical drugs. We use the trust account to pay for the drugs on the spot. Also, if we run out of reasons for patient public kitchen, we utilize the trust account to pay for that patient medicine. In the whole system, that is what we've been using, we've been doing and that was how system was very fast in terms of procurement for urgent needs for the hospital. I think in the new system now, we've seen changes happening whereby the trust account has been abolished and we keep only one operational account that is for the P H A as a whole. So all the revenues that are collected at the hospital are deposited into the main operational account. For you to access, you will have to go through the normal procurement. Three codes, attach the code, cover letter, go for approvals, then it goes into the I F M system.
Now, doctor, let's stop right there. Now I see the root cause of the delays. So if there's a mother bleeding and there is no specialist, that, that medicine that will help that mother to stop bleeding, the pharmacist will have to raise a requisition and he has to go through the management and they have to sit down and discuss it. And then they have to collect quotes that might take three or four days. And that poor mother will bleed to death because of the process involved under P H A. Before P H A, it was never like that. That's what you're telling me. The monies are kept in the trust account and CEO has got full access to the trust account. So as soon as the pharmacist raises a requisition, it goes straight to the CEO and she approves it, raise a purchase order and you have that medicine within hours. Or if it's not available locally, it'll be flown in the next day. So now I see where the problem is. Thank you so much for giving me that insight, doctor. Really appreciate that. You may continue.
Alright, let me continue to mention something on the Public Hospital Charges Act, alright. I think the team from the surgery and anaesthetic team yesterday made a few remarks on their presentation. And one of the challenges that they presented yesterday was trauma. Trauma is one of the top causes of admission at our emergency department. I think Dr. Kuri will speak more on that. But at the management level as a hospital, trauma is eating more than fifty percent of all our resources in the hospital at the moment. In terms of staff manpower, in terms of resources, medical supplies, medicines, the operating theater, operating time. One of the reason why they made mention that we have a high cancellation rate yesterday is all because they had to attend to emergency operations. And one of the reasons is because of the high level of trauma that is currently happening here in Madang. I think it's a similar situation all throughout the country. Alright, having, having said that, the use of his policy, I would make a strong recommendation that the use of his policy or the Public Hospital Charges Act should also include a clause on the trauma cases. And we should be charging patients to some certain fees on trauma cases. So we drive the message that they should take responsibility for their own health when they come into the hospital. The reason why I'm saying this is because when you look at other diseases that are making people to come to seek health service at the hospital, these are causes from other diseases. But this one is manmade. Someone is forcing someone to be injured and they're coming to the hospital using up more than fifty percent of all the resources. So that's something that we need to strengthen at the national level to look at how we can deal effectively with trauma cases that is eating up most of our resources in the provincial hospitals nationwide. Alright, while on that, I'd like to also call for an intersectoral collaboration with the police department. I think that's very important that law and order has to be strengthened within the surrounding peripheries of the urban centers, also the rural areas, because when there is lack of law and order, when we see law and order breakdown around the communities, you see trauma cases very high. Alright, last point on governance and leadership I'd like to make is medicines procurement. The O Y C pharmacy will speak more on the operational matters, but let me make a few remarks on the policy issues here. Alright, as a country, we have what is called a national medicines policy. Alright. The national medicines policy is written in such a way that procurement of medicines and medical supplies is a national function. It's not a P H A function, it's not a district function, it's not any other levels of government function, but it's a national function. What are the implications of having a medicines policy that talks about procurement being a national function? Alright, the budgetary implications are this. When we do the budgets for the P H As, we are not given any funding for procurement of medicines and medical supplies, especially those emergency medicines and specialist medicines. We are not given those funding to help us purchase for these medicines, alright. So when the National Department of Health fails us to procure medicines on time, I think this is the current situation that we are faced with now, P H As cannot pay for the emergency medicines, for our urgent requirements. Why? Because the policy doesn't give the Department of Treasury, the Department of Finance, the power to give funding directly to P H As to purchase medicines. Instead, we are using operational funds to pay for medicines and medical supplies. And that's eating into our operational budgets and so we are faced with other operational challenges on the ground. So my recommendation to the committee is for the National Health Department to review the medicines policy, especially the clause on procurement being a national function and give some allowances where P H As can be given some funding through the annual operational budgets to procure specialist medicines and critical shortage of medicines while waiting for the normal procurement system from the National Health Department. Alright, I'll move on to the next scope of inquiry that is health planning, health service planning and delivery. Funding. I have been instrumental in delivering the budget for the Madang P H A since twenty fifteen under the Modulon General Hospital and the P H A system as well. I wrote the budget from twenty nineteen up till last year. So I will give you some basic information on how we drive the budget and where the loopholes are. Alright, in terms of the budget, the fiscal policy, fiscal directives from the Department of Treasury on how we frame the budget changes from year to year. Alright, in the previous years, the budgets were formulated based on programs. That concept changed into the latest budget that we do is based on facility. So what is called a facility based budgeting. Alright. Personally, I would, I would say that the both systems of budget, the program based budget as well as the facility based budget is good for us as a P H A. The reason why I'm saying this is because when you look at the public health programs in the province, the public health programs, immunization, family planning, malaria disease control, these are all programs. So when we deliver the budget based on these programs, I think that's, that's, it's good for us, alright. While the public health services are more program based services, we also have another module of services within the provincial health authority, that is the facility. Alright, we have the Madang Provincial Hospital, which is the biggest single facility under Madang P H A. After this, we have the district hospitals or the rural hospitals. And then we have the health centers, subcenters, aid posts, community health posts. These are individual facilities within the P H A system, alright. When you do a program based budget for these facilities, it won't be adequate. When you do a facility based budget for these individual facilities, it works out well for us. Because in the previous system under the provincial hospital, the Modulon General Hospital, we deliver budgets based on facility based budgeting, alright. In the facility based budgeting, we list the number of key important tasks that we do to deliver services within the hospital and we cost out those activities from day one to day number three hundred and sixty five in a whole year. And that's how we come up with the facility based budgeting in the old system, alright. In the new system under P H A, we still need to have a model of care. The new system doesn't spell out very clearly how public health system should run and the creative health system to run. Let me say this to illustrate more. If you look at the health center, for instance, at the health center level or an aid post level, they still deliver the programs. They still do immunization and on a daily basis, they still see patients prescribe, give injections. So this is public health and this is creative, all mixed up. But in a lower level facility, if you have only one or two staff working at the lower level facility, how will this staff deliver both the public health programs and the creative programs? And that's a challenge for us. So that's why I'm putting forward to the committee for a recommendation that we have to have a standard budget framework for the P H As that takes into consideration a suitable model of care for P H As throughout the country. Alright, let me go to the next part of the presentation that is on, on funding. If, if you look at the funding, funding for Madang Provincial Hospital, I didn't- If you look at the funding, funding for Medeng Provincial Hospital, I did an analysis dating back to twenty fourteen to twenty twenty-five. They, I'm not going to discuss the budget for the whole PHA, but only for the hospital. If you look at the budget for the hospital alone, in twenty fourteen, the hospital was given eighteen million, right? Over the years, from twenty fourteen till twenty twenty-five this year, the budget has been increased. Alright, what are the components of the budget? There are four components of the budget that comes to the hospital. Number one is the personal emoluments, number two, goods and services, number three, utilities, rentals of properties, number four, capital formation, there is four maintenance work. Alright, the major chunk of the budget is eaten up by personal emoluments, right? Personal emoluments, we don't control personal emoluments here, personal emoluments is controlled by the finance department, right? If you look at the operational budget now, goods and services, rentals, capital formation, under the hospital, the budget for operational matters is high. And when you compare the budget to the new PHA system, especially for Medeng PHA, since twenty nineteen, the operational budget for the hospital has been reduced down to one point seven million. Under the hospital, it was three million, three million plus per year. What happened to the PHA system? When the PHA system came on board, the budget for the hospital reduced from three million down to one point seven million. That's where we have a lot of shortfalls in terms of rentals, maintenance of hospital vehicles, purchase of medicines, purchase of pathology items, medical supplies, all these issues are as a result of the reduction in the budget, especially for the hospital. Alright, I think that's about it from the funding budgeting. I'll go to HR. Alright, the issues of HR. Again, the issues of HR, HR is very similar to the issues of funding back in the hospital days, right? HR matters, recruitment, selection, those process during the hospital, I think the structure was done in such a way that the line managers report directly to the directors and then the CEO. So decision on HR matters happens right on the spot. Selection recruitment powers were given to the CEOs to make decision. Alright, in the new PHA system, the powers to do selection and recruitment was briefly withdrawn from the PHA CEOs and held back at the Department of Personnel Management level. Alright, so this is one of the biggest talents we face in terms of recruitment for the last couple of years under the PHA system. Alright, so for you to recruit someone urgent on the vacant position, especially say a doctor, a registrar, we will need to go through the process. The CEO doesn't have the powers. So the CEO acting on advice of the HR will draft a letter, send it to the Secretary for Health, asking special approval for the particular officer to be placed on a vacant position within the PHA system. So we are now going outside the PHA system to the Health Department, and the Health Department will have to liaise with the Department of Personnel Management to get their final approval before the officer is placed on that vacant position as a casual under what is called a short-term contract. Alright, so that's basically our challenges. So in terms of HR, bureaucratic red tape, long process to go around to get approvals from the higher level, and so that has resulted in six over doctors being not on pay for more than two years. Alright, so let me go on to the, I think, third point of scope of inquiry, that is emergency preparedness and infrastructure. Alright, again, with emergency preparedness, referring back to the PHA Act, right? The Act sort of places a boundary for the direct activity of health services and the emergency physician to work within the hospital confinement only. We cannot reach out. By law, referral of patients from the rural health facilities into the hospital is the responsibility of the health centers to us. In terms of ambulatory care, they're the ones responsible for referring patients to us. How do we receive patients? When we have a referral note, we know it's a referral case. Alright, so the PHA Act now sort of keeps us separate now. So the emergency physician, having learned that there's an emergency at Bogia Health Center, he cannot make a decision on the spot that send the ambulance down to pick that patient up. He has to liaise with the OIC for Bogia Health Center and see how best the condition of the patient, and then we decide how, which ambulance is going to pick up the patient, who's going to be escorting the patient, and who will meet the fuel cost of the ambulance from Bogia to Medeng. So I think that's one of the challenges that the PHA Act has put on us, but I think we have actually developed a referral pathway, and the referral pathway will actually see how best the referrals between the rural health facility and the hospital will improve in the next couple of years to go. But again, it's the PHA Act needs to be reviewed to make way for these policies to work well for us as a PHA. So we take responsibility for all emergencies, right from the lower-level facility up to the hospital setting. Alright.
Doctor, let me, let me stop you there for a while, since you mentioned the referral pathway. Under current arrangements, would you be able to explain to the committee on your referral pathway between Portmores, between Modular General Hospital and Portmoresby General Hospital? Would you be able to give me a little bit of insight into how you handle your referrals?
Alright, Chairman, in terms of referrals, this is what is called the tertiary, tertiary health services, higher level of services. Referral to outside centers is done based on certain factors. Number one, if we have, if we don't have the expertise locally here at Medeng Provincial Hospital.
Specialized medical services.
Specialized medical services. And if there's a need for us to refer the patient to a specialist who is more qualified, more experienced in handling a certain case, that's when we do referrals outside the province. That's one in terms of managing patients. Number two, in terms of diagnostic services, currently we don't have any city scan here in Medeng Provincial Hospital. We only have city scans at Engao, Kundiawa Hospital, and in Portmoresby. So we do referrals for diagnostic services outside the provinces, and with them having diagnostic services outside, it's better for them to manage patients outside than us here. So that's, these are some of the reasons why we do referrals outside.
How do you do it? How do you handle it?
Our doctors, consulting doctors on the ground, assess the patient's conditions, liaise with a specialist doctor outside of the province, discusses the case. If they're able to manage the case at their level, then they come up with a decision that, yes, you can refer the patients to me. And so, as a hospital, we prepare the tickets, accommodation for the doctor as well with the referral notes, and then that's when we refer the patients across.
So if you're sending a patient for specialized medical care to Portmoresby General Hospital, do you send the patient alone? Do you send a doctor with the patient? Who waits for the patient on the other side? How do they pick up the patient? I want to know.
In terms of referrals, it's an interhospital thing. So in terms of the receiving hospitals arrange for pickup of the patient at the airport, from our point here, there's a doctor, sometimes we have a nurse to escort, specialist nurse, and we have a guardian that goes along with the patient, all accounted for by the hospital, the referring hospital.
Okay, so in this case, it's always a specialized nurse or doctor accompanying the patient.
Correct.
Down to Jackson's Airport, Pom Jen arranges pickup.
Correct.
And straight to the hospital, and the nurse returns the next day, and the patient stays.
The nurse can return the next day, or important thing is for the patient to be received by the receiving hospital, they are stable, and then the referring doctor nurse can return back while they manage the patient there.
In a case where Pom Jen is not ready, is not ready to receive the particular patient, what do you do? You hold on to the patient here while waiting for them to be ready to receive the patient?
I think we don't do any referrals until there's confirmation that.
From the other hand.
From the other end that they receive the patient, they are ready to manage the patient, then we do referrals. So if there is no confirmation, we keep the patient here until we confirm everything and then send the patient down.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, we'll continue on with infrastructure maintenance. I think projects, we may have mentioned, I think the team yesterday, the SCM, made a mention on projects, yes. We've received fifteen million back in twenty twenty-three. There was a part of the government commitment to all hospitals throughout the country for hospital rehabilitation work. So the fifteen million was given back in twenty twenty-three. It sort of, an MOU was tied up with the fifteen million given to us. So the MOU dictates to us how the fifteen million is to be used within the hospital. Alright, so when the MOU was signed between the PHA, Medeng PHA and the Health Department, the MOU spelled out very clearly how the funding is going to be used, and one of the requirements in the MOU was for us to prepare a work plan. A work plan prioritizing all the key priority areas that have been listed in the MOA. Alright, so the work that started off was basically to prepare the work plan to meet the requirements of the MOA before approval was given to Medeng PHA to use the fund. Alright, managing projects at the PHA, at that time, we didn't have a board in place, so the management was actually liaising with the Health Department to try to see how best we can move these projects forward. Alright, because of this interference where we didn't have the board, we couldn't proceed more with the projects. The projects, there is a specific committee that the National Planning Department establishes that we do report to, and there is, we have within the organization, Medeng PHA, what is called an internal project steering committee, alright? This internal project steering committee with specific scope of work are required to put together the work plan for the fifteen million. And then this committee will submit to SCM, to the board for approval process. Once this work plan has been approved, then the next process is to call for an external project steering committee meeting. Alright, the external project steering committee is composed of representatives from the Prime Minister's Department, from the Department of National Planning, Department of Treasury, Department of Finance, and National Health Department. They are required to attend the external project steering committee, and they are very strict in terms of approving the projects. They will normally go through the MOA and approve the work plan if they comply to the MOA. Alright, several meetings were called. Compliance was an issue. The work plan didn't comply to the MOA key priority programs. So they put a hold to the work plan as the committee to review the work plan again. So that was a normal process that we did, until finally we got the work plan done and approved, right? The general approval was given from the Health Department, but again, we waited for the members of the external project steering to return on the ground for the meeting for them to actually approve. But because of the budgetary process, the budget cycle, they were not able to make it until today, as I sit before the inquiry. Hence, our project funds are not implemented, not accessible to date. Alright, with these challenges I made mention, I'd like to put forward one recommendation or two recommendations to the special committee on health matters, parliamentary committee on health matters. Number one, I'd like to see this external project committee being abolished. Why am I saying we abolish the external project steering committee? Because it's now seen as a bureaucratic red tape, unnecessary approval process, and unnecessary delay in implementation of projects on the ground. Number one, because we have, we are reporting to the Health Department, and why not the Health Department liaises with all the central line agencies to give approval to us? So we report straight to the National Health Department, and they report to the central line agencies, instead of us trying to bring all the central line agencies, including Health Department, to come down to our level to approve the plan. That's unnecessary, to my understanding and to, from my experience, it's a waste of time. That's number one recommendation to the committee. Number two recommendation I'd like to make to the committee is, if you look at the intention of the MOA and the fifteen million, it's good. It's to rehabilitate all hospitals throughout the country. But if you look at how the different PHAs are managing these funds, there is no uniformity. For instance, you take Portmoresby General Hospital, and you compare Engao Hospital, and you compare Wabek Hospital in terms of the facility, in terms of the physical infrastructure. Portmoresby General Hospital is a three-story building, where all the clinical facilities are housed under one building, easy to manage. And you look at Engao, they have a very big facility, big campus, facilities are scattered all over the place. My second recommendation is, why not the Health Department establish a project management unit, centralized at the Health Department, where they can provide oversight on projects, on hospital rehabilitation, projects throughout the country, where we have a standardized design for all hospitals? So we have uniformity in the design of new hospitals that reflects the modern-day era. That's my second recommendation to the committee. Alright, now back to maintenance, I think most of the things on maintenance will be mentioned by the facilities manager, but for the sake of making mention, in terms of budgeting, we are getting, we are putting into the budget funding for maintenance at the hospital. In our AIPs, we kept. In our A I Ps, we kept all maintenance requirements from the various sections. We compile them into one as a hospital and we submit to the P H A management to take up on board. Alright. Uh one of the biggest challenges we face as a P H A is implementation of the budget. You can submit the budget, budget gets approved. But when the funding comes to our level on the ground, it's how we manage the budget that matters the most. Alright, going back to my previous point on facility-based budgeting. If you look at the budget document, the budget document spells out very clearly all annual budget, how much money goes to the public health direct rate? How much goes to the executive services direct rate? How much goes to the corporate services direct rate? And how much goes to the creative health services directed where the hospital comes under? So this budget specified in the budget book that talks about funding going straight to the hospital. But this funding has to be given to the hospital for us to run our own uh progress at the hospital level. So I would put forward that uh one of the biggest challenges that we continue to face is the management of our budgets within our level at the P H A level.
Now doc, I want to ask you another question. Besides that fifteen million kina, is this a one-off payment for the upgrading of the facility or you have been receiving such money since P H A came into being?
Alright, chairman, we we have, we have been receiving money for development works under the P H A from the old hospital system. And then it continued to the uh P H A system under what is called the P I P funding direct from the National Planning Department. Yes, we do get those funding. Uh this year, we did receive also funding for hospital refurbishment works as well under P I P funding apart from the fifteen million.
So what do you call the fifteen million kina? What is it? What kind of money is it?
The the fifteen million kina was a commitment from uh, I think, Peter O'Neil government to rehabilitate all hospitals throughout the country. So it was was a political commitment by the then government. But then the Department of Health saw that there needs to be accountability on the fifteen million. That's why they set into place the M O A that guides how we use the fifteen million kina.
Okay, so last year you received a little bit, this year you got a little bit more for refurbishment of the facility.
Correct. Alright, uh with with next points in the scope of inquiry, financial management. I think I've made a mention of all this already. Uh we'll go on to the performance monitoring and compliance. Alright, with performance monitoring and compliance, I think the S C M has made mention yesterday of certain P H As throughout the country. And from my experience, the uh Western Islands P H A and Mill Mill Bay P H A. Uh they have three, four direct rates. Uh the fourth direct rate is direct rate for planning, monitoring and evaluation. Alright, in the P H A Act, it talks about only three direct rates. There is the corporate services, executive, public health and creative. Alright, uh I'd like to put forward to the committee that the P H A Act has to be amended and make allowance for the fourth direct rate because when you look at policy, planning, monitoring and evaluation is a different uh there's a different level of work, it's it's cumbersome. You cannot get the director corporate services to do all this work. Project management also comes under the policy, planning, and many direct rates. So it has to be a separate direct rate of its own. So I think that's uh one thing I'd like to put forward to the committee to have the P H A reviewed and have the fourth direct rate become a law so we can establish that direct rate as well.
If it's not in the act, then why, why is Western Islands and Millen Bay have it in their structure?
I may not know the reason, but probably because they may uh have put forward strong uh arguments with the Department of Personal Management for them to grant them the approval to have the
So it's just those two P H As?
Yes.
Western Islands and Millen Bay?
Those are the only two I know that they have the fourth direct rate. There may be other P H As who have the fourth direct rate that I may not know. Thank you, doc. Alright, I'll, the last, the last scope of inquiry is patient care and safety. I won't say much on that one, I'll I'll leave it at that and I think manager for medical services will pursue those issues there. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you so very much, doctor. That was a lot of insight into our operations here at Mudalong Hospital. Let's continue on with emergency services.
Thank you, chairman. Alright, um I will cover emergency services as I talk through the as the medical manager role. So ma- medical, uh the the medical services is the um is the heart of the core business function that is happening in the hospital. It coordinates that. And uh yesterday we had all the specialists uh came and lined up here and talked about all the issues that they faced. They all come under medical services of the hospital. And medical services is one of the very important clinical, it coordinates all the clinical services, the core business of the, why we established the hospital, why we have the care is there. And um let me make some declarations in here that the Office of Medical Service has not been occupied since the inception of P H A till last, late last year. So we have reestablished the Office of Medical Service and now it's about going to eleven months now. That's how we start to restart the service again. And it's a very, very critical service or the division that looks after all these co- co- co divisions. Surgery, obstetrics and gynecology, pediatrics, anesthetic. We have the uh, these are the core clinical services. And then we have the support clinical services, pathology, pharmac- pharmacy, uh X-ray services, family support centers. All this, everything that we talk about, the service that are operating in the hospital comes under the medical services. Formerly, in the previous Mudalong Hospital and the hospital setup, it was director medical services. Now it has changed to, when the P H A can, yeah, came in, it changed to medical services. So I'm emphasizing on the significance of why medical service is important because all these issues that we had talked about yesterday and now the pharmacy issue of the hospital, as well as the laboratory issue of the hospital, all comes under medical services. And it's a very critical area that we never had that established since P H A. Till now it's about going to eleven months, now we have the established Office of Medical Services. So that's how infant it is at the moment, in terms of having the P H A run and at the same time having the hospital running at the same time. There is no system in place for medical service when the P H A came in. So now the systems are slowly put to place. And literally, there is no coordination during that time till up, when we establish the office again, we have to coordinate all things again. And that was one of the things that slowly get onto the patient, one thing that I've realized during the time is that any officers who came during the four or five fifty years during that time have gone into an abnormal norm of there is no office of the services, medical services that runs the affairs of all the clinical care. And those are the mindset that are slowly changing. Um I'll put to, put into perspective in terms of using the uh the the staff, the supplies, uh the space that we have and infrastructure and uh and the systems that are in place that impact the service that we give to the patients. For efficiency and real establishment of that, it's, it depends on other things. And uh one of the, one of the things about staffing of the medical service, you talk about, we talk about doctors, all the specialist doctors, all the registrants and medical officers, the training doctors coming in, they all under the medical service of the hospital. And to get one specialist doctor, it's really, really hard to get a specialist doctor. In the pathology service, we don't have specialists in this pathology because the training takes a, training division, it takes five years or six years of some, at most is four years. And there's not a lot of pathologists in the country. That's why Johnson is still as a, looking after as a manager for the pathology services for the province as well. In the X-ray services, same thing. And now we have good number of surgeons on the ground. We have five surgeons on the ground and uh it within, within the medical service, they're trying to operate against one anesthetic and one doctor registrar trying to sleep the patients while they're doing the operation, so the ratio is very, very big. And we have five surgeons and they have only two doctors working under them as a training. So the ratio of the surgeons to the doctors working under them and looking at the number of uh anesthetists who are gonna sleep the patient, the ratio is just too, it's it's not matching up. And all of those things boils down to the H R factor. Availability of positions, recruitment of available positions. And all these methods has been mentioned yesterday and today as well, and I'm not gonna touch on to those methods. But the service that is impeding to, to progress on in the, in the surgical service, it's, it's all the factors that you can see from uh start to the finish of it. And not only that, when we talk about the surgical service, I've mentioned, Dr. Kune was talking about these things yesterday. And the factors that affect the proper surgical service, a level five facility, to define a level five facility, surgical service is very, very important. It's critically important. And it not, does not come down to the dying medicines only, but the useful service must be running. And and that is one of the most important thing that we are slowly going out of that. Uh drug factors of it is one of that. Water issue is another thing. When you have the water, there is no sterilization going on. When there is no sterilization, the things are not ready for the surgical service. Power issue, when you have power issue, it affects the surgical service. When we have uh, not only surgical, but other services, but when I focus on the surgery now, looking at the surgery, anesthetic together, together now, yes. So and then the manpower itself. In an operating theater, in an operating theater, it needs surgeon, anesthetist, supporting nurses as well, and wholly other people that come together to work together for one patient. And that is uh, all these factors put together, we will continue to have a high cancellation rate as long as these factors are not addressed from the manpower to the uh, to the to the factors outside of that, which is a water problem, the power issue and all stuff. I have also want to highlight on the staffing, when we look at the harder staffing of the staff issue of the other departments. In the medical, it's important that we must have consultants there, the specialist. In the emergency, we must have that, which I am sitting there doing that role, but also covering the office of the medical service as well. Uh surgery, we have that, pediatric, we have two specialists there. And all the specialists, the minimum that we should have for the hospital, that we can provide a service here and outside as well, is not one, is not two. It should be three or more. And with the current structure we have, we cannot absorb the rest, it's just only one or two. Or in the internal medicine, we don't have any specialist there, but only the registrants and the medical officers are running, and that's very, very important area, it's a very huge area as well. It covers all the uh medical patients, T B, H I V. And all these programs of that as well is covered under the physicians for the, for for the province as well. And uh to deliver those kind of technical, technical advice and bringing the things together, it needs a specialist on the ground. And it's very hard for us to get a specialist on the ground on, on all those areas as well. We have the pull factors and push factors here. The push factors now is very huge in in our hospital, that is pushing people out. We did that one, now the person, the the physician has moved to Divine World University because of all these push factors that is pushing them out. And uh and again, we talked about, when we talked about H R, we were talking about, we are talking about only the manpower and how to get the manpower. But the H R is more than that, it's just, we know that it's completely more than that. How do we retain them? How do we attract them? And and those are harder areas that needs to be looked at as well, because it's very, very critical. If we don't have, if we don't have specialist officers on the ground, we will not have enough doctors working under them, because doctors are here to be trained under the specialist. And if there is no specialist, there won't be doctors working under there. So I'm reemphasizing on the importance of the H R and the importance of the manpower and the things that surround that, that is important, that the most important offices that you talk about, the specialist and the medical offices, it depends on their function as well. And if that is corrected well, we should have enough and we should retain most of them in here. And that service in for the hospital will decentralize down into the districts as well in this perspective. Um looking at the supplies, we we come to realize that supplies for the pharmacy, uh for the pharmacy, for the pharmacy supplies and for the laboratory supplies, those are the areas that cost a lot of, a lot, a lot of cost for us. And and as 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 I've mentioned before, pathology service for us is a very, very important support service. Uh and anesthetists have mentioned that yesterday, surgery have mentioned that yesterday. And all the clinicians down the line, they they look into the windows of that. And as far as I can attest to, in the last, in the last uh ten months now I've been in the office, that pathology service is below level five requirement. We are doing only one or two things sporadically, comes on and off, and we are not doing all the things that we're supposed to do. Because we do not understand really what's happening within the position, it's too, too expensive to run the, the, the service itself. Same applies to, we are buying the medicines now in the, in, for the pharmacy. We're supposed to buy a specialist drug, now we are buying all the drugs as well because of the supply issue. In fact, there's a decline in the supply issue recently in the last four months. We get the supply from the area medical store and uh Grace is gonna talk more on this as well. And we have seen that it has declined August and to September. And when we do the analysis on the September supply, the order that we put through, they fulfill only zero point three percent of that order. That was the supply for uh September. And that, the usual order is right up there and it's just below one percent order that was issued. So that, that sort of supply issue, it's, the doctors and the clinicians and the nurses are there to use what we 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 provide to them. And if that things are not there to make it, make their job easier, it's so much stress upon them. The stress level that is actually upon the, of, upon the first encounters is very, very, it's it's huge because I know that personally, I work in the emergency department and the first encounters we have is in the emergency department. And in that area, if something that you need to do urgently, but you cannot do it because you don't have the supply there. Yeah. It's, it's too stressful. It's too stressful, so those are the, those are the important areas that Jeremiah has, Mr. John Mark has put out the uh the how from the national coming down and Grace will talk about the technical part of how we get that. But in the clinical practice where the medical service comes in, there is no supply that they can use effectively to get it done. Uh and we cannot maintain the pathology service, to maintain a ninety-four thousand kina every month, we cannot maintain that. Because there is no allocated fund separate for all these things. And this brings me to a statement I wanna make is like this. Medical services for the hospital is the core, i- it it defines the core business of taking care of the patient in the hospital. It depends on all these other things. One most important thing is that we, the regular, regular operations, I want to highlight on this, the regular operations are regular operations. They must be operated on, their, how much their regular operations for pathology service, pharmacy service, and all the clinical service that is in there must be met on a regular basis and not on an emergency basis. Only then I will deliver or the office will deliver and all the clinicians will be satisfied with their clinical service because it's secret, we, 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 now at the moment, we are not maintaining the regular, regular operations. The factors are huge. It's mentioned some of the operational factors in, in terms of funding and other things as well. Uh, but when we are looking at fixing those factors, it has to come down, before we do new, do new things, we must maintain the regular operations. And now we are not maintaining the regular operations. The pharmacy supply is not coming as usual. September supply has dropped down to zero point three, which is less than one percent of the regular supply. Pharmacy cannot men, uh, pathology cannot maintain the regular sort of things because we cannot provide ninety-four thousand kina every month. Same applies for everyone else. And we depend, when we have to attend to a case in the night, the, the vehicle must be ready, a good vehicle must be ready. Fuel must be ready. If power goes off, the gen set must be ready to come on as soon as possible. I shouldn't be stressed about thinking, when is the gen set gonna come on? Do we have the fuel? It has to be a regular service. And as of this meeting now, my recommendation would be, for the medical services for the hospital, with deals with all the clinical services and clinical patient care, our minimum regular operational services, operational methods must be, must be, as, as a checklist, that must be ticked off all the time and it shouldn't be on a ad hoc basis, on emergency basis. Only then we will give the minimum service that we need to give to the patients and for our patients. So, when we address those factors, major factors affect that, we should be looking at coming back to the, keeping the uh, uh, basic operational methods that matters to the, for the clinical service to operate. I will mention certain things on the systems, because there was no system and, system, no officials to coordinate all the systems. The compliance, the audits for the, for the, for the patient's uh service that we have given, every, every, every unit has to give in their audits on a monthly, on a quarterly basis. So we are getting back to those things now. It was never before, properly, the clinical service audits were given to the office, but now we are getting back to those as well. And that also includes the incident reports, the incidents that happens, it has to be. So we're putting back those things in place where when there is an incident, now we have to sit and talk about it, the department calls me in, we have to go together and we talk about the incident and then we come up with the plans, how do we improve there to prevent that in the future? And those kind of incident management of the clinical, clinical practice is coming into place now. Those are the systems that are coming in place. As well as the referral that was mentioned by Jeremiah as well, referral inside the province from one facility to another and going out of the province. And the same applies for that as well. So, the clinical governance, one of the most important things is the clinical governance within the hospital. And the major part of it as well comes under the medical services as well. And the clinical governance covers a lot of important things about patient safety. And um, the word clinical governance itself is a, is, is sort of a foreign word to most of, most, most of the staff. And we are slowly getting back to that as well to highlight the clinical governance. The first workshop was carried out, the second one was carried out as well, and we're looking for more to more sensitizing the, the hospital staff over clinical governance and implementing that. But yes, now, the monitoring and evaluation part of the clinical governance is noted established and it has to be established. Even the, the board is already in place and the board has allocated the governance which is responsible for this already. And now it's on us to make sure that works out. Um, and that is, that's all comes under the system of medical services of the hospital. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Doctor. Thanks a lot for your contributions. Let's move on to the pathology section.
Thank you, Chairman. The laboratory, including the blood transfusion service, is one of the most costly services in the provincial hospital. Every year, the price of the consumables, they don't come down, they continuously increase. So in a month, we use about almost ninety-two hundred thousand kina water consumables. So, in the event that I put in a purchase order, a requisition for a certain consumable and if that doesn't come in on time, then obviously the service level drops. In this case for blood transfusion, if I don't get enough consumables for a blood on a screening, then there is no enough blood now. So, and that affects surgical services, including trauma cases. And it leads to cancellation of that surgery service. So, so on, so. Um, the, the issue is that we don't have the timely payment for the, the pages, orders that I sent in, the requisitions. If it's consistent, then the service is also constantly maintained. You know, if it doesn't come in on time, then obviously I have to stop providing that service. So, laboratory is very, very expensive. Previously, before the P H A, the health department through the area medical store usually supply the equipment and the consumables that, that we need in the provincial hospitals. Now, no, the P H A has to purchase these things. So to maintain the current level of service that I'm providing now, so we're looking at about that much money.
Are you getting that much support?
Yeah, no. That's why I'm having this problem of providing service now. Continue, your service cannot be maintained unless you have regular payment for the consumables. You know, I do um, the purchase orders plus the quotations and then I send it off for payment. And if the payment is delayed or if there's not enough money to solve this items, then obviously I can provide the service.
On your current, current um arrangements, how many, how many blood tests do you do in a day now?
We do about two hundred to two hundred fifty.
But that's your normal, that's your normal test in the day?
Yes.
Two hundred?
Yeah.
Plus?
One patient can have more than, I think, two to three different tests. Biochemistry is about seven. If we had to do full blood examination, that's a lot more tests now.
And your current rate?
Um, in the meantime, we've been reduced to just the basic test now. Most of these tests are not available now.
Just give me some figures. You said you normally do around two hundred blood tests in a day.
Okay.
Now you drop down to what?
Now we drop down to half, hundred now. That's basically malaria diagnostic service.
Basic blood tests.
Donor blood screening from time to time, cross meds and so on.
What sort of consumables uh do you need? Just name, name, name some stuff that you need, that you're running out of.
We need reagents and consumables.
Reagents?
Yep.
Reagents.
Yes, for biochemistry. And others are like liver function test, you know, kidney function test, you know, to check electrolytes and glucose and, and stuff like that. And then we need also consumables for full blood exam, you know, that tells you what the condition of the body is, you know, like you get enough blood hemoglobin or not, something like that.
So your reagents are running out?
Yes.
Do you source this locally? In the pharmacies?
Yes, our supplies are in the country.
How do you compare your supplies of contribuables and reagents before P H A came into being and after P H A?
Our procurement team at the health department were sourcing this through the area medical store, so they were supplying the equipment as well, they all standardized. So they have the same kind of equipment, you know, sent to the provincial hospitals and the reagents now know the P H A have to purchase these things.
All your, all your medical equipment, your delicate um testing equipment, are they all working now?
Yes.
They are working, in good condition?
Yeah, they're in operational condition.
None of them have been affected by all the blackouts?
Uh, we do use UPS.
You've got UPS backup system?
Yeah.
So your, your equipment in, in the pathology section is protected?
Yeah.
Okay, so you're just running out of uh reagents and consumables?
That's right.
How do you, how do you raise your concerns when you run out?
I usually um come in to my supervisor, that's Dr. Kune here, and then I also say to yes, yeah, that usually when it's critically low. But otherwise, I continuously put in purchase orders for payment.
Who do you give your purchase orders to?
I usually send it to the accounts.
Accounts?
Yeah.
Not to the pharmacist?
No.
Straight to the accounts?
Pharmacist deals with medicines, I deal with pathology consumables, so.
Okay, so Dr. Corey, he gives you a request, what do you do?
Gives me a request, um, I will have to approve and then send it up to the director curative. This is Dr. Gowie.
Okay, and then he takes it up with the management, correct? And it depends on when they sit and meet and discuss these issues. While you're waiting to do your tests, they have to meet and discuss. And if someone is sick and if they're not available, you will still wait for days. That's the case, right?
Usually I, I place the purchase orders before we actually run out of everything.
Yeah, you know your critical limits.
Yeah.
Yeah. Were you, were you operating the pathology lab before P H A?
Yep, I've been in this service for, I think, more than fifteen years now.
So you see the services of the pathology going steady or dropping or?
It is dropping, it is dropping because of uh putting stock out of reagents and delays in payment.
Before P H A was okay, now after P H A, your services are declining. Generally, they're declining.
Yep.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anything else?
Um, also, um, we need to have a, increase the manpower so we can expand the services like microbiology. We don't have that now. If we have to establish microbiology, that's, deals with growing um bacteria, you know, pathogenic conditions causes disease. Then we'll have to have more funding to come in, probably we'll have to double it. Because this, this is like a tertiary institution now, because all referrals coming into the province.
So, you are advising the committee that your section in the pathology needs a microbiologist?
Um, in fact, we just provide the basic service only, but we have the potential to, to expand, to provide specialized services, like the antibiotics that patients take. We usually do testing first to see if it is okay for patients take. That's where microbiology comes in. For clinical governance, you still need microbiology to help the clinical governance. You have to swap the pansers and see if there's any microbes growing in the theater or stuff like that. Those are contaminants, they shouldn't be.
So we don't have that now?
We don't have that. And obviously.
Do they have this in any other facility?
Yes, they have. They do have that in other facilities. Microbi- microbiology is very important in all the inpatients that we have. And someone would think that in ICU patients is very, very important, all the ICU patients. They must have microbiology's uh service running, so they, they do do a sort of surveillance for all the patients that are coming through. We know that if we are giving this drug to the patients and we don't know whether this drug, patient is not improving, we don't know whether this patient is resistant to this drug or not. Only when you do uh, the microbiology comes, we do culture sensitivity. And then we will know that now this patient is resistant to this drug, so we need, and sensitive to this drug, so we have to change the drug to that. And all these things now we don't have, so we, we try the drug, doesn't work, we change it to another one. So it's like a blind sort of changing the.
Guess firework.
Guess firework. So, what is saying is uh, microbiology is part of a level five facility that we're supposed to provide?
Which we don't have in.
We don't have now.
Yeah, Chairman, let me, let me add on one more remark on that.
Yes.
I, I think we have, we have the antimicrobial policy by the health department. Uh, this policy was developed recently to mitigate all these factors here. The, the thing I'm, I'm seeing is that the implementation of this antimicrobial antibiotic policy has to be done as soon as possible. Because what we are referring to here is the anti-biotic sensitivity testing, anti, antimicrobial sensitivity testing. That means that you, you, you get samples from a patient and then you, you put in a few antibiotics into that culture and you see which one responds well. And so you will know that, okay, this antibiotic is working on this particular patient, so let's change the antibiotic and get the patient on this one, so, because it's responding. So this type of service, although it's in the national policy, but it needs to be implemented at the provincial level. We need the support from the health department to implement this. Which means they have to supply us with the uh equipment, training, all the reagents and so on. Thank you.
Well, with, with, with current, with current financial constraints that we face, if you had microbiology section into your operations in pathology, your ninety-four thousand kina will now go up to a hundred and twenty thousand kina per month.
Obviously, it will double.
Double.
Yeah.
Wow.
Microbiology is very expensive.
That's right. For interest sake, um, Dr. Jeremiah, huh? Yeah, Jeremiah. This medical research institute, uh, our people next door, they are building a world-class laboratory just next door to us. Um, I don't know if these services will be offered in that new facility. Are you guys, have you guys asked around? Did you do any research into this? Anyone else done anything?
I'm, I'm sure, I think based on some discussions we held with a team from the I M R.
Yeah.
Yes, they are, like, in the moment, we are working in collaboration. The I M R, apart from other stakeholders like Divine World University, the National Health, I M R is also a partner to us. Uh, in terms of uh research, they are using the hospital as a research facility as well, so. I think the discussion that was held is also to cover some of the areas that we are running. They can assist us as well.
All right.
That's in the discussions.
Very good. You know, we in Madang are very lucky to have a world-class laboratory being built just next to us. So some of these uh services that we don't have at uh our hospital with the current arrangements, we can also access some of these services from our friends across the road from I M R. It's just for interest sake, I wanted to discuss it. Continue on.
Okay, um, I'll go to manpower. Currently, we have a staff strength of about eight. Um, three on short-term contract or casuals.
Casuals.
Yeah. I would love for the casuals to go on as permanent too.
Those casuals have taken the same training as you did?
Yes. And there's one retiring, so our service is, is entirely dependent on manpower, you know. We have more manpower than we get to expand services and move around people.
Yeah.
You know, like um the T B and H I V diagnosis in a different building, blood bank is, is another thing, they're all in the same, not in the same area. And also we've got plans to expand services out of the province to places like Daigul, which is coming up.
Yeah.
Bogia, so, which means we have a double the, the current staff we have now, which is concentrated in the provincial hospital at the moment.
Dr. Jeremiah, since he mentioned Daigul, if that hospital comes up, your budgetary allocations will include Daigul. And the, some of the services that you are, you are, you know, you have here will also be available at the level four hospital in, in Daigul. I, I really don't understand now if we are going to face the same, same issues in the new facility. Um, I'm just look, trying to look ahead and uh have this discussion. Uh, number of manpower will increase. Uh services will increase, budget will increase. Uh but with current experiences, we are definitely going to have issues with the Level Four uh facility. How do we mitigate this? Going ahead, planning today for Daigul.
Right, Dr. Chairman, with the I think with the Daigul District Hospital, the, the current established structure under the P H A has positions already created and allocated for Daigul District Hospital. It also includes a medical superintendent position, the position is currently vacant, so in terms of H R, skeletal staff that will actually run the services in Daigul, in terms of H R, the positions are already available. The only challenge we are faced with is as soon as we go towards the completion of the uh facility, the, the project, probably two years in advance, there is our responsibility now to make it clear to the central line agencies that we have an additional facility. So like I, I made mention of the facility-based budgeting. If we go back to that, we will add one more facility on the budget and that's Daigul on the budget. And then that budget covers the H R, operational requirements and all other things will be added onto it. Yeah, so that's the importance of the uh health facility-based budget.
Budget. It's good, we have um, we have the Corporate Affairs Director here. So I would call upon her later on to, for further discussions on Daigul. You got anything further to add on?
Um just a final recommendation that I think it would be a more cost-effective to standardize equipment and consumables, not just in Madang P H A, but across the country.
Yes, yes.
It's a lot cheaper and we wouldn't be running out, you know, if we get these things in bulk and start supplying for area medical center in Mosby. It's easy to maintain equipment to, to service them. Right now, we, we getting it from all over the place, so you know, when certain equipment goes down, you have to run to get another one by then.
What you have in your lab in Modulon?
Hmm.
Do they have it across the road on the paramedical college?
It's different.
Same type?
It's different.
It's completely different?
Yep. Um we use different equipment, like for food blood exam.
Yeah.
It's different, by chemistry, it's the same.
Okay.
Yeah.
Have you visited any other facility? P H A?
Uh we visited Hangao and
That was something similar to yours?
Yep, completely different.
Completely different?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, that is something uh the, the department need to look at. Because when government issues a contract on a facility, um a company from Europe will come and build it. Like they did in uh, in, in Goroka base. And in another facility, someone from China will come and build it. And an Australian firm can come and build a facility. So they, they will equip it with their own equipment. So this is something that the Health Department must, must be really strict on. The supply of medical, delicate medical equipment to be standardized right across all P H As. You can build a facility, but the medical equipment must be standardized from the same supplier. That is something that we need to establish. Thank you for raising it. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anything else?
That's about it.
Thank you so much. Now, let's go to the pharmacies.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um for the pharmacy services, we provide two basic services, that's to the inpatients, the patients sleeping in the wards and to the outpatients. Okay, I'll go through the process of ordering of medicine.
That's what I'm interested in, the process.
Okay. As we know, um medicines procurement for the public health system remains a centralized function of the government. In saying that, the hospital, um the order schedule for hospitals is monthly. For Madang Province, the hospital plus district health facilities, we all place our orders to the um area medical store in Lay. We don't get it from Hagen or Mosby or WeWork, no. All our orders has to go to Lay. Okay, so for the hospital, the order goes to Lay every month. First of every month, first day of every month. If we are late to place our orders on the first day of the month, they give us a grace period of one week. Within the first week, we have to put in our orders.
How do you send your orders to Lay?
Um before, we used to manually write, write orders on the medical stores' issue voucher.
Yes.
However, um now we are using the M Supply System. The M Supply System is a computerized inventory management system. So we use that because we are a Level Five Health Facility. Um within the M Supply System, there is a master list for a Level Five He- Health Facility to use. And within the master list, there are a thousand and ninety-six medicines and consumables that we have to, our hospital has to have. So we're using that list, replacing our order forecasting for three months, the next three months. When we place our order through the M Supply, it takes the area medical store two to three weeks to prepare our medicine and then the L D Logistics, the contractor, logistics contractor, they bring our supplies back to, to the hospital. Okay, um the area medical store, when they process our order, after completion of assembling and packing all our orders, they're supposed to send us a supplier's invoice. That's through the M Supply, so we can view what the items that we ordered, did they supply us all the items, which items are nil-stock? If the order has been supplied, how many, the quantity they supplied, all this. It has to come through the supplier's invoice. However, at times, they won't supply us that, so we wouldn't know
What you get?
what we're gonna get. If we're already having a nil-stock, we wouldn't know that. A M S Lay has also nil-stock on that. So we have to wait until we physically receive our orders, go through, and then we will see that, okay, now this medicine is already nil-stock. Okay, the M Supply System, um from the, it links the national level, um Health Department, they can view our stock at the provincial hospitals. It links the um area medical stores, the provincial medical stores and the provincial hospitals. So they can view our stock, what we're doing, we're issuing this, we have this in stock, we don't have this, how much we're giving out, all this. They can view for us. However, from a provincial hospital level, I cannot view what the A M S has. They've restricted that. So I don't know what stock they have until.
Why is it a, a top secret to A M S?
Um.
That you don't have access to?
I don't know. Sorry.
Did you ask?
Yeah, we, we did ask one time and the procurement and distribution manager at the um N D O S, he said that because of the information is sensitive and in case, um not just the hospital, but people outside get hold of that information and use it to like on social media or all this. That's what he, he mentioned. So they have put a restriction on us not able to view the stock on, at the A M S. So once we receive our orders, we go through it physically and then we note the nil-stock and then we generate a nil-stock list to be sent to the private pharmaceutical suppliers for procurement of medicine by the P H A. Okay, um in the M Supply, there's also a um notification that comes on, alerting us of which um drugs that are understocked or which drugs that are overstocked, which drugs are expiring soon, which drugs have already expired. So when we are waiting for, um when we see that our stocks are going down and we're waiting for supplies from the area medical store, we've already started generating our nil-stock list using the um M Supply alert. However, we cannot um process it until we receive the A M S stock physically and then we can request for quotations. Because if I, I process a quotation before receiving from A M S Lay, I might, we might pay
Extra, additional?
Yes, we might receive it from A M S Lay, but we also pay it from there. So I have to wait until I get my order and then process the quotations. Okay, the quotations, I get three quotations and then I submit it to the area, uh sorry, Manager Medical Services Office. He gets the approval. Um it goes to the A R O. From there, it goes to Director Curative Services and then he approves it. It goes to Accounts. From Accounts, I think it goes to the C E O for approval, final approval, and then it comes back to Accounts. And then finally, there's no money left. And the quotations sit there, one month, two months, three months. By the time the check is raised, the pharmaceutical suppliers also run out of this.
And the patient is dead.
And the patient is dead. Yes. So that's the situation. Okay, when the A M S got burnt down, we faced a really big challenge with nil-stock of medicine, we couldn't get it. And then after they relocated and a temporary A M S in Lay got set up, we thought that our supplies would improve then, but till now, it has deteriorated, it has gone down. Now we are at the West, we have like basically no stock of all the basic medicines and specialist medicines as well. So yeah. Um currently, after yesterday's meeting, I went back and I went through the M Supply System to see the total stock that we have. From the one thousand and ninety-six items that we are supposed to have, we only have available three hundred and twenty-eight items in the hospital pharmacy. Otherwise, all the rest are nil-stock.
How many items do you have normally, one thousand?
We're supposed to have one thousand and ninety-six, one zero nine six.
Different drugs?
Drugs and consumables.
Drugs and consumables.
However, currently, there's only three hundred and twenty-eight. Okay, for the specialist medicines, like for specialist doc, uh medical offices and senior medical offices who needs a medicine that is not in the medical and dental catalog, the request is put through me and then I get a quotation for it and then I follow the same process submitting.
Those are for what sort of medication?
Um special, specialist that is not uh included in the medical and dental catalog.
So you get a request and you initiate the paperwork?
Yes. And then it follows the same paper trail to the accounts and then.
Now, let's go through the process. This guy here, this doctor gets to you, right? For this special um medical drug. Doctor on the floor to the pharmacist.
Yes.
And from you to who?
From me, I get a quotation, three codes as required.
Yes.
And then I give it to my superior.
Who is that?
Um Manager Medical Services.
That's you again.
Corey.
Okay, from you, what do you do?
Goes to Director Curative.
And then from him to who?
To the accounts. For paperwork.
The A R O?
The authorizing request is an officer, yes. And from the A R O, goes to who?
The accounts.
Accounts?
From the
Processing or accounts?
From the A R O, it goes through the, to the Director Curative Services for approval.
No, we've already passed that man.
If it is less than ten thousand, he approves. If it is more than ten thousand, it goes straight to the C E O for approval. That's the paper hard copy work. So once the hard copies are all signed, it comes back to the A R O for commitment again into the system electronically.
You see where the problem is? Before, you know also, doctor, pharmaceutical pharmacy, CEO, the CEO buy, shortcut. You become up in this P H A on Monday while waiting for medicine. We have to come up with a better system. That will be my recommendation, this is too cumbersome. This is too much. We thought we are doing something good, but we are not. I have to stand in Parliament, on the floor of Parliament, and I have to read through this. So everyone can understand why we're having problems. You think we'll get a member of Parliament, someone of this life? No God here, no God, that's why they don't care. And through this kind of inquiries, I have to advise Parliament that this is the process. That's why people die while waiting for the process. And we think we are doing something good. Like they say, while fix something which is not broken. Man, this is very interesting. This is for specialist drugs, right?
Yes.
But for your usual day-to-day medical drugs, it comes from your
From that.
area medical store, straight into your pharmacy and you distribute it to access.
Yes.
But for specialist medical drugs, this is the process we have to go through.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, but if there is a shortage of amoxicillin, it goes through the same process?
Same process. Um, let me mention here, for the specialist.
We're not finished yet.
Oh.
So from the accounts, it goes to the CEO. From CEO to who?
Uh, C- C- CEO signs off for claims more than ten thousand.
More than ten thousand?
Which definitely all the drugs are more than ten thousand. It comes back to the Authorized Requesting Officer again. ARO.
Goes back to ARO?
ARO, and then ARO commits electronically into the IFMS system.
Commits into IFMS?
IFMS system. And then all financial delegates now, they log, log on into the system and they start approving there using the levels of approval.
From financial delegates, log on and sign off, right?
Sign off, correct. Approve.
To approve?
Yep. Sign off to approve. And then it goes back to the CEO again.
And then?
Then it goes to the machineist. Once the CEO approves, it goes to the machineist, the final person to.
To print check.
Print the check.
This is very good.
Once the check is signed, it goes back to the, two signatories to sign again.
Print the check?
Goes back to the signature.
So it goes to? Financial delegate?
Yep. Financial delegates. Two financial delegates to sign off the check. And then the manager finance writes a cover letter for the bank to authorize the deposit or transaction.
Now you are operating like a district. This is the process of the IFMS. PHA should have a different system. We are wrong to do this. This is completely wrong. This is stupidity at its best. You can't employ this system in an hospital. Now, all financial delegates will log on and sign to give approval. What if someone went to the hospital to bring his kids, he's sick?
They'll have to wait.
Everything is on hold until he returns two days later. And now, old man die or this is. See, I am very happy. I'm gonna read this on the floor of Parliament. I am very happy. I'm gonna write it out very well.
Okay, um, infrastructure wise, the pharmacy is too small to hold all the bulk orders that is coming in. With the population increasing, medicine demand is also increased. However, there is no space in the pharmacy. If we have to get the all of one thousand and ninety-six items in, we wouldn't have any space. It's too small. Currently, we're storing our IV fluids outside where the patient waiting area is to get their medicines. The IV fluids are stored there, exposed to light and to heat and already the potency has been compromised. So they have to be stored in a.
So your current space in the pharmacy is not enough?
Not enough.
So some of this medication you stocked outside?
Pharmacy.
And that's not good?
No.
For the life of them?
It can deteriorate quickly because of the heat and sunlight. So it has to be stored in a well.
Did you inform the management?
Lots of time.
Any other space where there is air conditioning?
Uh, we all, we have, yes, I did. On my presentations, I always include this adequate inadequate space in the pharmacy, but nothing has been done to it.
So we are all happy, the boxes of medicine are sitting outside. We walk by every day as if nothing's wrong?
Maybe. Okay, um, even in the pharmacy, um, when I started working at the pharmacy, we had three air conditions to keep our medicines at the required storage condition. However, presently, we only have one air conditioning, which is, I think, ten year old now, malfunctioning at times. So right now, our dial is set to eighteen degrees Celsius, but it's giving out thirty degrees Celsius. Um.
What's that?
Coolness, the air condition. We don't, we only have one functioning air condition. And it affecting our medicine condition.
That's from last month.
Yeah.
From last month.
So you used to have how many air conditioning?
We used to have three. And we are down to one right now.
How old are those air conditioning?
Um.
Those are air, air conditioned units, the split units have been there since the, uh, new management came in, uh, two thousand twenty. Uh, our guys have recommended a replacement due to constant breakdown and servicing. Uh, codes have been raised and forwarded to following that process to accounts for payment of new units. Thank you.
So your general temperature now within the pharmacy is?
It's around thirty degrees.
Thirty? Because of one air conditioning machine?
Yes, and malfunctioning as well.
You should be, the temperature in there should be what?
Um, eighteen or two baby room temperature, twenty-five is still okay. For medicine to sit not in the fridge but on the shelf in an air conditioned area is between eight to thirty degrees. So we are at the maximum now.
It should be around eighteen to?
Eighteen to twenty-five.
Eighty to twenty-five degrees Celsius. Okay. Anything else?
Um, human resource. We are currently short staffed. There's only myself and another pharmacist we used to work and then recently another was recruited. Both the pharmacists are on casual positions. They are not only, I'm the only one with, who want to be a permanent.
Two on, two casuals.
Two casuals.
So there's three of yous?
Yes, there's three of us now.
You need?
We need additional, um, pharmacists. We have, we have a lot to do. Data entry consumes a lot of time. Because we don't have time during the day. We usually do it after hours. That's into the M supply system. And yeah, I cannot do administrative work because when I go in at eight o'clock, I'm serving patients all the way until four o'clock. So we need staff on the, yeah, some of pharmacists on work.
Okay.
Thank you. I think that's all from me. Unless you have more questions?
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you very much. It's almost quarter past twelve. Uh, give me two minutes. I'll serve a recess, excuse me. All right, let's continue on and we finish off with, um, our maintenance manager and we'll break for lunch and continue on after lunch.
Chairman, sorry, uh.
Yes, doctor.
I have, I have one more, I think, remarks to do with the pharmacy. I'd like to, I'd like to mention, okay?
Yes.
What, what we've discussed is, uh, the issues within the hospital. From the hospital to the area medical stores, from area medical stores back to the hospital and to the patients. But there's, there's more problems to that. There is, uh, to do with the National Health Department.
Yes.
All right, uh, we have the national medicines policy. Uh, after the national medicines po- policy, we have a medical and dental catalog. Medical and dental, dental catalog is the official document for the government of PNG whereby old.
You call it again?
Medical and dental catalog.
Dental. Catalog.
Catalog. Right. That's the official document where it documents the one thousand and ninety-six list of drugs that the government procures for the country as a whole. So it's contained in that document. All right, in that booklet, uh, the list of drugs are divided into three categories. Number one is the vital, two essential, and three non-essential. The vital list of drugs, abbreviated as V, must always be there in the medical stores, the hospital, the district hospitals, health centers, and aid post. By law, by this policy, they have to be always there. So that's vital medicines.
Yes.
So from the list, it spells out clearly which ones are vital, right? Then you have the essential. Essential save as a second line. If you don't have the vital, you must save the essential as well. And the non-essential, not necessary. Anytime you need them, you can do special orders to for the Department of Health to procure these medicines. Right. Now, in our case, you look at the list, the vital and essential are all nil stock nationwide. Amoxicillin is nil stock. Paracetamol is nil stock. Seprin is nil stock. Flucloxacillin is nil stock. These are the everyday vital and essential drugs that we require to run a fully fledged hospital on a daily basis. These are nil stock. They are not available in the hospital pharmacy. They are not available at the area medical stores lay and all other area medical stores throughout the country. So the problem now goes back to the National Health Department. Where is the procurement process now for the medicines and medical supplies? I believe we are, we, we get three hundred million for procurement of medicines and medical supplies every year. So now the problem, when we don't have the medical supplies, medicines and medical supplies at the, area medical stores, it's indirectly telling us that the National Health Department Procurement Division has sent, procured for the last three to six months. That's why shortage is explained nationwide. Maybe because of cash flow problem, maybe because our guys at the National Department haven't done their homework. All right, so that's, that's something that, uh, I would like to also mention in the inquiry. These issues are not our doing. Some of these issues are at the higher level. Okay, with the specialist drugs, the specialist drugs are also included in the, uh, medical and dental catalog as well. They are also in there. So any other drugs that are not in the medical and dental catalog, those special requests are those ones that we will buy from outside. But apart from my experience, all the drugs, the specialist drugs are all contained in the medical and dental catalog. And that are supposed to be supplied by the National Health Department procurement brands. The only exception are the pathology items, reagents. Uh, pathology reagents are not in the medical and dental catalog. Uh, the reason being that different hospitals, uh, choose different brands of equipment to do tests. So their reagents may not be uniform all throughout. So if you buy a, um, lab equipment from a supplier, this supplier will supply their reagents. That's why I think, but I think one of the recommendations from the manager pathology to standardize all pathology throughout the country is the way forward for us. Because reagents, backup service, warranty, spare parts, that will be easy for us, uh, explanation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, doctor. That's very, very important. Okay. Maintenance.
Uh, thank you, chairman. As the facility manager, I would only be reporting on the hos- hospital perspective of the hospital infrastrac- uh, infrastructure services. Under the hospital section, in the hospital, in Merengh Province Hospital, we have the, we have four sections. That is one, the building. Under building comes the carpentry, electrical and plumbing. Two, the static plant and equipment section, uh, unit, sorry. Three.
Static plant?
Static plant and equipment. I will go through each, uh, unit again after this introduction. Thirdly, it's, the third section is the NHSS, Infrastructure Standards.
Infrastructure standards?
Infrastructure standards. That is the, uh, we have our delegated, the facility delegated officer in this section is the project officer or the project architect. That is part of the PMU. And the last is the refrigeration and conditioning, uh, unit. Now, as you have, maybe you have, uh, went around the other day inspecting the hospital infrastructure uh, services. You will, uh, clearly tell that our hospital infrastructure services and buildings are all old. Uh, from history, they, they were built in the late nineteen fifties and opened in the early sixties. That's how old the infrastructure, uh, services in the hospitals are. Um, in my fifteen months after taking over from the former facility manager, there were so many issues. I cannot, I did not know where to start with all these sections. It has been, I would say, it has been neglected for too long. They were never attended. It has been, I would say it has been neglected for too long. They were never attended to. And there were so many issues that came on social media and yeah, other, yeah, on the news about the stages of our infrastructure in the hospital. So we have, during my term, I've come up with my priority list to stabilize the services in the hospital, especially in these times, in this current economic crisis we are facing. So we managed, we managed to go in the, we, we managed to get through the provincial administration for procurement of our two tanks, the water reservoirs. And that comes under the static plant and equipment. I'll go to number one. Number one is building. In the hospital, we receive, daily we receive at an average of seven requests. That's from all sections like carpentry, electrical, plumbing and refrigeration. After we receive these requests, we go through the normal process. Our guys go into the inspection. Upon inspection, we go, we, they recommend for repairs. After repairing, after their recommendations, we go and coat and then we put it through the normal procurement process. The second unit is the static plant and equipment. And this is, this is a very important unit in an hospital, in a level five or six hospital like Merengh Province Hospital. For an hospital to be called a level five hospital, it has to have services in place. Infrastructure services in place like sterilize, sterilizers, incinerators for waste disposal, water reservoirs for backup water supply, second year, and generators, to name a few. Within these last 15 years, we've been having this water reservoirs problem. So we were entirely depending on water PNG for water supply. Once it goes off, we also hope in the hospital. When there's a problem with the pumps for a month up at the water treatment plant, we also face the same length of time of water outage in the hospital. So that has brought a lot of, a lot of talking to the users, hospital, public users. The sterilizers, that's part of the plant and equipment. And I support the hospital executive manager. And as you have said already, we have to standardize plants and equipments that are used in hospitals, especially in provincial hospitals. So we speak the same language. In the past, we've been using Tiger other than sterilizers. We haven't had problems, bigger problems with them. Now someone is pushing through Sinwa sterilizers. That's a Chinese brand. So that's what, I'm so thankful of you taking up that point of standardizing all plants and equipments in the provincial hospital. And maybe my recommendation to that is also to, for the National Health Department, especially at the facilities brands, to come up with a bulk store for spare parts. Because it's very, most of the static plants and equipments that we use, they are all overseas based.
Suppliers.
Suppliers. So when we, when we standardize this, we have a central store. So when we are, when we are not sterilizing for months and the services are on hold, we have to go straight to the, our back store and get these parts. So that's the main concern about the static plants and equipment. And number three is the NHSS, which is the infrastructure standards. The National Health Services Standards, under the National Health Services Standards, we have the infrastructure standards that complements the clinical standards. It is, in, in the infrastructure standards, we have levels of in health facility settings. And the first one is, the level one is aid post. It has a standard setting. And the national, the Merengh Province Health Authority with the infrastructure standards, the facilities guys, they are the regulators to the these settings, health facility settings. Level two is health, community health post. Level three is health centers. Level four, district hospitals. Level five and six, referral hospital. So that's the referral pathway. And the services are scaled down as they go down to this level one. So we've got this problem on the ground right now as we, as we speak, the referral pathway. Infrastructure wise, we need to really align things with the standards, infrastructure standards. And on to number four, that's the refrigeration and air conditioning section, uh, unit. This unit looks after all refrigerators, air conditioning units, plus the air conditioning plant of the operating theater, the mortuary and hospital vehicles, air conditioning. That's the last of it. Now, I think that's the four sections that are normally, we have a lot of issues with this. If I have to go in detail, we really have to, it will take a lot of time.
Yeah, I've got some specific questions to ask you. So you might want to stick to my questions and answer them.
Okay.
Instead of you going through, because there's a lot, a lot of things that you want to discuss. Firstly, toilets. I hear a lot about toilets at the hospital, modern hospital not working. Toilets are blocked. Can you give us some insight into what is the problem with the toilets?
That's on our last, my last point.
Put it first.
Yes.
Let's talk about it. What is the problem with the toilets?
The current problem with toilets is funding issues. It's on my last point. We've got funding issues with our toilets.
I want to know, I want to know what is the problem with the toilets? Is it the pipes are too small? Is it the septic is not working? Is it the systems are bugger up? What is it?
Okay. Our toilets, these toilets have worked ever since they were. The main problem now with our toilets is the deteriorating, number one, conditions. Number two, water. If we have constant water supply, there won't be any blockages along the waste pipes and all this. There, there'll be constant, you know? And when it goes off, the water cuts for a week. And when you try, when the water comes on, you imagine what's on the waste pipes. And our waste pipes are wounded. I, I'm still using that because when they get blocked, we dig it up, we clear it and when we want to cement it back, we create, we create the traps.
Vacuum.
Yeah. So we really need to replace all the waste pipes. So our problem with the toilets is they are old and they've gone past their time.
Do you know how many toilets altogether?
Four toilets.
Four?
Four public toilets.
Four ablution blocks, you mean?
Four ablution blocks.
Okay. Alright, so what's your total budget for maintaining all those ablution blocks?
Scope, we did a joint scope with the hospital architect and the hospital executive manager. All costed around 50, 50,000 to fully renovate for one toilet only.
One ablution block?
One ablution block only.
So you have four?
We have four.
So that's 200,000 kina?
200,000, you're right.
Just to maintain all the toilets?
All the toilets.
So we won't have problems?
We won't, right.
Including the septic tanks?
Septic tanks, we don't have standalone septic tanks. We, we connect to the town sewage system.
Okay. So there's no issue there. You just want to maintain the toilets?
We just want to maintain.
Plumbing works.
Right.
So how long ago did you put that submission into the management?
Last year, when I, it was one of my priorities. So far, I've done one.
You've completed one ablution block?
Not to the standard that we wanted. We use the recurrent funding allocation.
How much money did you get to do that?
It's around 29,000, just to get it running and, and now we are, I'm working on the second one.
Okay. Alright, so it's an ongoing maintenance. You're still working on the toilets?
Right.
So we don't have problems right now?
We have problems with the other, the other three.
Ablution blocks.
I have to complete.
In one of those ablution blocks, how many toilets are there?
Four toilets, four showers.
Four shower.
For male and for female, four toilets, four showers.
That's in one ablution block?
That's in one ablution.
Okay. Alright. So your main issue is when you have water outages. When there is no water coming into the hospital, then that's when you expect problems in the toilets?
It needs constant water flow.
So I hear the provincial government has purchased Southern Cross tanks. What's, what's, what's the story there?
Two times Southern Cross tanks of 120,000 liters purchased. We are in the process of installing it. As I speak, the Southern Cross technical officers are coming, boarding the plane to come over to Merengh to start
Very good.
Tomorrow, Thursday.
How long will it take for them to install these tanks?
Two weeks.
Two weeks. Your water will be coming in from the catchment in the hospital, eh?
Our, our water will be coming in from the town supply. So as we receive it, we, we, we fill up these tanks as our, they are our reservoirs. We reserve water there for outage purposes.
What about your guttering in your catchment within the hospital?
I use guttering only where there is no asbestos roofing.
Alright. Tell me, do we have asbestos at Model Hospital?
All the water have asbestos.
The management team is aware of that, right?
They are aware of it.
The water in those tanks would be used for drinking too?
Only on those ones, those ones from the catch, we get it from the corrugated roofing. We use them in the kitchen and sections in the hospital, some with iron roofing.
So for those two Southern Cross tanks, you're gonna get water in from town supply? And you will also get water in from certain roofs that are free from asbestos?
No, we only get it from town supply.
None from the roofing?
None from the roofing. There are only 9,000 liters.
The smaller tanks.
Smaller tanks are placed there for, to serve during outings, like in the kitchen, ward.
Okay. So those we, we have currently installed?
Currently, yeah.
That's for drinking? Okay, so the water from the two Southern Cross tanks will be used for toilets and shower? Right.
Chairman, let me, let me give some clarification on that. I think with the upgrade of the water supply system, we've got that three phases. Phase number one is to actually get the Southern Cross tanks installed. But the tanks are installed on top of the hill. So we cannot get water from the gutters in the hospital buildings. So it's going to, going to get supply straight from water PNG in.
Yes.
When water PNG goes out, we will use those two things to supply the hospital. That's phase one. Phase two will be to drill bore water within the hospital location so that we can supply bore water into the
Tanks.
Tanks. Phase three is to install water purification system. So that we can continuously use the supply system. I think the first stage of the project is with the Southern Cross tank.
But that does not deny the fact that we have asbestos in this ward.
We have. We are not using the tanks in the hospital wards. There's a few buildings that we, we remove the asbestos, replace with roofing iron. Those are the only buildings where we install tanks to them.
Yeah. But we still have some buildings with asbestos.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Majority.
Alright, good. Thank you. The next thing I'd like to know is the morgue, mortuary. Can you give us a brief history on the Merengh, the Model Hospital mortuary? What is the problem with the morgue?
Currently, I think there is no issue with the morgue. We only have issue with our, the chillers. This Chinese brand chillers. It was brought in some years back. We cannot maintain it because all the, the compressors and they are all in Chinese language. You have to get an interpreter there to interpret which type of gas we want, we will use.
So those were put in how long ago?
Since the hospital era.
Oh, long time.
Long time.
And they are now not working? They broke down?
We are, we are using, we are using these refrigerators.
Containerized?
Containerized.
Refrigerated containers, yeah.
Refrigerated.
So the main morgue itself, it's not working?
It's not working.
So there are no bodies in there?
There are no bodies in there.
All the bodies are in the containers?
Right.
You only take them out, wash, to dispose? Otherwise, the morgue is empty? Any plans for replacing the chillers in the morgue, if you know?
With the, sorry chairman, with the mortuary, I think the mortuary was functioning up until 2010, 2010, 2012, when there was this plane press somewhere Bokati.
Yeah.
That's when That's when they brought in the two containerized uh reefer containers next to there. Uh, funding from the operating theater under Farayan Juba's board chairmanship. Uh, he purchased this uh six chillers from China, a Chinese brand. Uh, we were using those chillers for almost a year, and then the chillers go broke down, buggered, and then no spare parts to repair. So currently, as we are speaking, we are using the reefer containers as our temporary mortuary. Yeah, so we are still using them. Uh, the freezing point in the reefer containers are well below zero degrees. Zero degrees. Normally, it should be from uh minus two to eight degrees. But this uh below zero degrees means it's a freezing point, so you'll have to leave the body overnight, twenty four hours for them to completely defroze before you embalm and prepare the body to go out. So I think the standard of the mortuary currently is, is not what we require to preserve the bodies. Yeah, that's, that's the status. Uh, in the work plan, that uh fifteen million funding, the mortuary is part of the work plan for a new mortuary, the designs. Uh, everything is already done, waiting for the external projects steering committee to approve, and then all this work will be.
Are the toilets also in the fifty million?
Toilets are also in the fifty million. Almost all the buildings in the existing campus are all in the fifteen million.
Very good, very good. Thank you, Doc. Anything else?
Uh, the issues.
Yeah.
Uh, the issues are one, funding, it's a maintenance funding. Uh, I've never used fifty thousand, over fifty thousand in over on maintenance. So all my requests when they
And only yearly, monthly?
Quarterly.
Quarterly.
Like for the second quarter now, all my requests are
Piled up?
Piled up there. I've worked it out in a quarter. They gave me an allocation, and I tried to calculate accommodate all the facilities, the things that are lined up to work on.
Yeah.
When I did the breakup, I only came up with eighty something in a per day, no per per uh item to work on, per request, which I cannot, so we only work one, we only attend to one at a time. So our rate of turnover is very low in attending to maintenance, in maintenance wise.
Okay, um, if you have a electrical problem in the hospital, do you deal with it yourself, or you bring in a contractor from outside?
Uh, that's the thing, uh, I've always been uh talking to my previous DCS. Uh, there is a cost demarcation between the PMU and the facilities, the maintenance team. Fifty thousand and down, I, so I've been, every bigger uh electrical works once assessed by my team, we recommend out, outsourced on it.
You ask for a contractor from outside?
We ask for contractor, anything that is beyond hundred thousand. Anything that is below, for instance, the power hook on from the standby generators to the uh officers up on the hilltop, we did it because it was below the
So you have a qualified electrician under you?
I have a qualified and licensed electrician.
Okay, so he deals with all um electrical breakdowns? Okay, all right. And also you have a plumber?
I have a plumber, I have a carpenter, I have a joiner.
And you have a refrigeration mechanic?
Refrigeration mechanic.
Okay.
And that brings me to the second issue is manpower.
Yeah.
We need to boost up our manpower with uh treatment. For instance, static plant, the guy that was uh, uh, the previous man that was handling the static plant has passed on, which was our acting facility manager. As I speak, I don't have any static plant officer. Which is a very important uh area in the hospital, uh, static plant and equipment.
You, you've made that known already to the management?
Already.
Okay, so what's your workforce now? What you start selling under your maintenance team?
My workforce now is nine, one is going through the exit program.
Go on, finish.
Go on, finish.
So you're down to eight?
Eight.
How many more do you need?
Hmm, according to the section requirement, I need around fourteen.
Fourteen staff?
Fourteen staff.
So you're short. What, what is the um normal breakdown or normal call for you in the middle of the night, early hours of the morning? What do you, what's, what's, what's your usual call out? What sort of uh?
The normal, normal call for breakdowns is on power supply. Uh, we have been, lately, we have been experiencing long hours of
Blackout.
Power blackouts. And we have, we have been overusing our generators, standby generators. Standby generators are only to cater in blackouts, like short hours of blackouts. We have been operating our generators for over fifteen hours. And it's very expensive to run generators, because the, the five hundred KVA, the main five hundred KVA genset, the standby genset, tank's capacity is four drums, that's eight, eight hundred liters of fuel. And the one hundred sixty five KVA that uh accommodates the operating theater only is two drums. It's a total in one refuel, it's six drums for both gensets. So in the past, in the last weeks, we experienced a lot of blackouts, and I've been begging for fuel around town.
If you, if, if you run the main, main standby generator with eight hundred liters, how long can you run that for?
The normal, normal operation of the genset to run, we should, we should be only up to eight, eight, twelve hours is the maximum. But we run it over twelve hours. So when it comes to fifteen hours, the tank is empty. It's coming down to the last quarter, and we have to put it off if there is no fuel.
Okay. So your maximum, maximum um time to run with eight hundred liters is fifteen hours?
To be safe is just around fifteen hours.
Okay. So when you don't have fuel, what do you do? How do you ask for fuel? When you require it?
I go, when we don't have fuel and we don't have funds, like now, I go ask for fuel from officers in town.
Oh, but your usual request, for them medicine, we had already, for you for fuel. How do you go about getting to the top management to buy fuel? How do you do it? You raise a paperwork or you ask verbally or what do you do?
No, it's the normal process. I get quotes for fuel. When I, when I'm on the last uh two drums or going towards the last two drums, I ask for fuel. I get a quote and follow the normal process. But when, when I don't have the fuel, when
Who do you go to?
I, I report to the director corporate services, so I go to the director corporate services submitting my claim.
Okay, you're lucky, you go straight to the top, unlike your friends here, they have to go around.
No, functionally, I, I'm supposed to be reporting to them because I'm in the, I'm stationed in the hospital.
Yeah.
Somehow, because I report to the director corporate services, I go to the director corporate service.
Okay. So your, 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 your critical limit is two drums? When you have two drums sitting there, you have to request for new fuel?
When I'm going towards the last two drums.
On average, on average, how many drums do you go through in a month?
Uh, depends on the blackouts, like
Yeah, with current, worst conditions?
Worst conditions, twenty drums.
Wow.
Two purchase in a month.
Hmm. Forty thousand liters.
Four thousand liters, not forty.
Oh, four thousand?
Four thousand liters.
In a month?
In a month.
You wouldn't know the cost?
Uh, for one purchase, it's around sixteen thousand, so it's thirty two thousand a month.
Okay. Anything else?
The last thing is on the, I'll go back to the uh plants and equipment. I, I will emphasize on that again.
Yes.
I need all these, all the plants and equipment standardized, so that would be my recommendation. So we speak the same language as Hengao. When we are down on parts or anything, we just, we help each other before our next, our sub, our order comes in for spare parts and supplies.
Did you put in new orders for new air conditioning for the pharmacy?
Yes, already. That was two months ago.
You collected quotes from where?
Uh, Bryander.
How much?
Uh, that was two eighteen BTUs. It's around three thousand, one thousand eight hundred per unit, so it's three thousand, two units for the dispensary.
Three thousand?
Three thousand two hundred.
How long ago did you put in that request?
Uh, it's two, three months ago, not during the term of our current DCS, but during previous DCS term.
Can we, can we ask for donations for air conditioning machines? Brian Bell or Leon Hardware, any business house? This is very important. We need to get the temperature right in the pharmacy. It's sitting at thirty degrees right now. Should be eighteen to twenty five degrees Celsius. So that must be attended to as a matter of urgency. Eighteen BTU. It's about what? Two thousand kina for one?
One thousand, one thousand six hundred per unit.
One thousand six hundred kina?
Eighteen BTU.
Okay, so you need eighteen BTU?
Yes.
And you need how many?
Two units.
But the other one sitting there is not working properly?
Uh, we had a look at it yesterday.
Yeah.
It just, uh, the boys are pulling it out now for service.
Cleaning it?
They'll clean it up and try, put it, regas it and put it back while we wait for the uh order.
Okay. Anything else?
Uh, the sewage. We have a constant uh backflows due to the Water PNG sewage pump house in the hospital. There is a pump house where the car park is. When that uh pump house is not functioning, it causes uh backflow in the system.
So you have a faulty pump?
I have a faulty pump that I don't have
Jurisdiction over?
Yes.
You can't touch?
I can't touch.
That's Water PNG?
Water PNG's uh
Did you report that to Water PNG?
I just reported it again to the PNG, Water PNG manager.
Oh, good, okay.
This morning, out there, after several attempts yesterday to get them uh pump, pump, pump it out. And we are experiencing uh overflow of raw affluent onto the main road drain towards tree line. That's not normal affluent, that's highly contaminated affluent.
Okay. So all they need to do is replace the pump?
I heard there that problem with the impeller.
It blown?
Blown.
Okay. Due to constant blackout, again?
Due to constant blackout and uh foreign materials used in the uh toilets.
Toilets.
Towels, bam-bams, come, when they're caught up in the impeller, it cannot rotate, so it blows it out.
All right, anything else?
The last thing is uh, we need the crossing to the hospital put back on. I have witnessed uh patients, very sick people, trying to cross the road from the bus stop.
Did you report that to your management?
I have.
You have?
I have reported it, but it, it's the uh town council. I have to visit them again.
Town council or department of works?
Town council and department of works, yes sir.
Did you make an attempt to go to the department of works?
Yes, through the uh technical services branch.
What's the feedback?
I'm still waiting.
It just needs fresh new demarcation. Paint the lines again.
Yes.
Okay. Anything else?
Uh, the last thing is, we had a, we had a joint assessment with the uh management services branch from, from, that's health department, including the national health facilities branch. Uh, we assessed the all the hospital buildings and the uh hospital, the clinical, non-clinical, and the support services buildings. They have passed their time, they will need to be demolished.
Yep.
Reconfigured and renovated. And renovated, that, that we all can see.
The hospital needs a complete facelift. Thank you very much for your contributions. We will adjourn now for lunch. After lunch, I would like to see the corporate affairs. Uh, director. And uh, we will deal with water PNG. Uh, the board chairman. And uh, PNG Power Regional Manager coming in from Lake. So we will adjourn now, it's six past one. We will convince, uh, convene the meeting again at two o'clock, two P M. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, let's break for lunch, lunch is provided? Okay, you get a, you get, get yourself a lunch group and you go up to the upstairs restaurant for lunch. Thank you very much, see you again at two o'clock. Ladies and gentlemen, we resume at quarter past two. Into our fact-finding mission, fact-finding dialogue between. I as the chairman of the permanent, permanent parliamentary committee on health matters. And the ground staff of Modulon General Hospital. I have with me two sister in charges of nursing, so they will introduce themselves. State their titles, how long they've been working for the organization, and then we can get into our conversations. Let's start, madam.
Thank you, chairman. Maureen Sogill is my name, I'm a nursing officer, uh, emergency nurse. Uh, I have been appointed as the acting manager nursing. For the Meding Provincial Hospital, and it's my second month of in the acting capacity. Uh, prior to me was uh, Sister Ilakivi, who is on my, right.
Okay.
So I'm in Provincial Hospital, under the Meding.
Let's let your colleague introduce her first, and then we can start.
Sorry.
Madam, introduce yourself.
Thank you, chairman, my name is Carolyn Ilakivi, I'm a midwife. Uh, this is my nineteenth year. In the Meding Provincial Health Authority, but uh, previous uh, Med- Modulon General Hospital. Uh, I've been working as a nurse manager, uh, working in several sections of the hospital. Uh, one of the section was, was the planning and projects, and maybe I would have something to say regarding the hospital projects as well.
Yes. How many years have you been working for?
Nineteen years.
Nineteen years. So what's your position now?
Currently, I'm, uh, helping one of the consultants working on the corporate plan, PHA.
So what's your capacity, what are you, what are you now?
I'm still a nurse.
Nurse. Okay. All right, let's get into our conversation. Manager, let's start with you.
Meding Provincial Hospital, under the Meding Provincial Health Authority. Uh, is the key level five rural hospital in the province, providing general. Medical, maternal, surgical, pediatric and emergency services. The nursing division forms the backbone of the patient care and plays a critical role in maintaining quality service delivery, patient safety. And workforce coordination. Nursing governance and nursing leadership structure, the nursing division operates under the structured hierarchy. That ensures accountability and supervision and efficient service coordination. Each ward or clinical area is led by a nurse unit manager. Who is responsible for daily uh, patient care management, staff supervision. Uh, nurse unit managers then report to the both clinical and shift supervisors. Who monitor standards of care, uh, manage staffing and oversee clinical performance. And then they then report to the assistant manager, uh, nursing, that's clinical and administration.
Hang on, um, so you're not in charge of all assistants in the hospital?
In the hospital, yes, but not the whole entire PHA.
No, 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 I, I, I'm not talking about the whole province, I'm talking about Modulon Hospital.
Yes.
All the sisters working in that hospital, in that facility, report to you?
Yes.
Okay, all right, and you report to who?
I report to hospital executive manager, hospital executive manager then reports to the director and then up to the CEO, that's the line of reporting.
Hospital executive manager, who is that?
Jeremiah.
Oh, okay, okay. So they report to you and you report to. Okay. Okay. All right, yeah, thank you.
So this chain of command ensures clear reporting lines and effective communication from lo- world level up to the executive management. It's the. Uh, nursing staffing at current in the hospital, we have a total of hundred and sixty-three nurses. Nine, out of that, ninety-eight are nursing officers and sixty-five are community health workers.
Hang on, nursing officers?
Ninety-eight.
Total is one hundred sixty-three?
Yes.
Nursing offices ninety-eight?
Community health workers sixty-five.
It's double use, sixty-five. Nursing officers are once finished from Lutheran School of Nursing?
Yes, with the white dresses.
Okay.
Those are nursing offices.
Okay. So you, you are in charge of one hundred sixty-three nurses?
Yes.
So that's just for Modulon Hospital, the nurses in Bogia don't report to you?
No.
So the nurses in Bogia report to the O I C in Bogia?
Yes, that's right.
And the O I C reports to who at Woodland?
Will report to the program managers.
Program managers.
Or PM Health?
Yes.
Yes.
And then they go to the.
And then PM Health reports to who?
The director.
Director, public health.
Public health.
Okay, okay, so director, public health is responsible for district facilities. Let me get that straight. Just let, just, just give me a little bit of time to write it down. Okay, all right, let's continue.
With the current manpower. Staffing distribution across the wards, uh, it, it indicates a significant shortage. So currently, as we are speaking now, there are nurses, nurses are working. Two to a shift, or one officer to a shift, looking after thirty-three patients in a ward. That's how far they can go, um. So main, main wards like emergency department, operating theater, children's outpatient. General medical and surgical wards, orthopedic, uh. Special care necessary pediatric ward, ICU, they're all indicating manpower shortage. Nurses are burnt out. Working extra hard. There were concerns raised for manpower boost. In the sense of asking for casual engagement, up till now that we are not receiving any favorable responses. And we are getting very worried because it's getting towards the end of the year, and most of the nurses will be going for their leave. And wish to stay and provide that patient care, we are really concerned.
So out of all the, all the casuals that have been employed so far, none of them are nurses at Modulon Hospital?
There are some nurses, casual nurses.
Okay. Carry on.
Okay. So the challenges us, uh, I've mentioned staff shortages and. Accommodation, staff accommodation, uh, is one of the contributing factor that, that is affecting our staff morale. Uh, insufficient staff housing. And with the rising rental cost, it, it is uh, causing a lot of stress to the nurses. With the nursing, uh, nurses who are accommodated at the institutional housing.
Hmm.
Uh, uh, nurses quarters and nurses home. The facility itself is rundown, not fit for human.
Occupation.
Occupants, yes. So we are just still sticking on because there's nowhere to go, the nurses have to stay. Hang around and provide that, uh, important patient care.
So currently, not all nurses are accommodated at the compound?
No.
Some nurses are staying at other places.
Other places.
Rented accommodation?
Rent, yes.
They pay their own rentals?
Rentals.
Yeah.
Uh, with the nursing administration, there's administrative burden as well, especially with the supervisors. They're supervising so many units at one time, within a eight-hour shift and it's quite a lot. For only one person to be in charge of the entire hospital. And then they go through the challenges of uh, staff absenteeism or staff getting sick and. Two or three wards having only one uh, nurse on duty. Or one or two wards without nurse on duty, and that supervisor is. That supervisor has to really go around to, uh, sustain that service during that eight-hour shift. So it's a real administrative burden for the nurse supervisors. Patient safety and service delivery, uh, nursing division maintains close oversight of patient. Care quality through daily work runs, they carry out, uh, doctors' orders. To shift reports and nursing groups, uh, patients' safety incident, uh, safety. Incidents are managed by the, uh, nurses. Uh, but most of the times, those, those incidences are not adequately managed because of manpower issues. So that's one of the biggest challenges that, uh, we are facing. Uh, patient safety as well, nurses are working double shift. Meaning sixteen hours and then. Can go into the whole entire twenty-four hours working with uh, with no break. So that poses a great threat to a patient. Because there will be, there, there is high tendency of incidences, so. Uh, manpower shortage is, uh, is really critical in the nursing division. Uh, the other challenge also is with the infection prevention control, uh. The infection control practices are not fully implemented, uh, because of inadequate supplies. Not only that, uh, because of, uh, water disruptions. And when we, and we, when we have water disruptions and we do not have hand sanitize, size, hand sanitizers to use. We pose a great risk to our patients, and not only our patients, ourselves as well. Um, many of the basic nursing care that we will provide. With uh, disinfectants not available, we are not able to capitalize the beds properly or disinfect the beds properly for next patient use. So that's only one of, few of the problems being highlighted. Uh, with emergency preparedness and response, uh, nurses play a frontline role in emergency. Since the inception of a PHA, Meding PHA in twenty nineteen. Uh, that was when, at the same time, uh, COVID nineteen came on board, so nurses were really, uh. They were really at the frontline providing that, uh, care. So, but, yes, nurses at the frontline, but then the challenge is. They always, even though, uh, they are the frontline liners, but they are always challenged with, uh. Manpower constraints as well as, uh, resources. And at the same time, there is ongoing gaps of, uh, uh. Inadequate, uh, emergency equipment of, and lack of regular drills. Okay, staff welfare and motivation, uh, I think I've already expressed much on that, nurses. Most nurses experience high wear clothing, um. They receive limited recognition, uh, one of the outstanding, uh, awards for the nurses that. They are always, uh, talking about and presenting to the management is the back payment of the S D M A. Uh, that's special domestic marketing allowance for the nursing officers, that's from the award of twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-three. It was implemented but not yet fully validated, so even though they are working very hard, those are some incentives that. Uh, they are not given to them, so it's, it's, uh. Demoralizing for them. The other thing is, uh, with the long-serving, uh, nurses. Their T O R, terms of reference, eh, sorry, top of the range, sorry. Top of the range has not been paid since hospital act up till PHA, ever since. So that is one of the things that if paid, it will help to boost the morale of those, uh, long-serving. Officers who have been working tirelessly.
Sister, uh it's, it's, is, is there an issue for, for the PHA or for the Department of Health?
TOR.
TOR, yeah, what you said about TOR.
It's PHA, uh PHA. PHA. It belongs to the PHA. Just um.
That's the responsibility of PHA, yeah?
That's the additional uh five percent that is paid to. Uh officers who have reached the, reached the salary cut of point five. So if they, they um get four. Rating four and five, they are compensated at. Top of the range, five percent. So it's just a additional regarding the. Um incentive, not really incentive, it's a, it comes with a staff performance appraisures.
Okay. Alright, continue.
Okay, burnt out. Uh delayed leave approvals. And housing difficulties contribute to reduced morale. Uh as well as delay in payment of casual nurses fortnightly salaries. If they are not paid on time, casual nurses are affected. They don't make it to work and that affects the roster and that affects the patient care. Uh not only that, also with the short-term contracts. We have been having them for more than quite too long now, short-term contracts. And if their contracts are not renewed. And that affects their pay and that affects the patient care as well. So with that, we found that some of the nurses are STC nurses, short-term contract nurses. Along with few of uh casual nurses already left. Ask for other job. Yeah. So we are not able to retain them. While we have the huge manpower need. So. Recommendation would. Uh recruitment and retention of nurses. We have a. An advertisement that is. Just last month or so. There was an advertisement and nurses applied, if they can fast track all those processes. And get nurses on board so they can help boost up the manpower.
Again, that is an issue for PHA or for the DPM?
It's both.
PHA and DPM.
Yeah, it's both. The other way forward would uh infrastructure and equipment. If the staff accommodation can be improved. And. Uh. Provide IPC and emergency supplies. And maintenance and medical equipment. And undergoing all those stress, there's one very important thing that uh needs to be. Considered with regards to staff welfare. If we can introduce wellness and counselling support for nurses, not only nurses, other staff as well. Uh experiencing stress and burnout. Right now, we don't have that service. I think it's probably nationwide. Okay, with that, the nursing division remains committed to delivering safe, effective and compassionate care. Despite existing resource and workforce uh constraints. Um addressing the identified challenges. Through stronger investment in nursing workforce. Uh. Infrastructure and welfare will significantly improve patient outcomes and overall uh service delivery. Across Meding province.
Were, were nurses awarded some increment in their salaries recently by the government? Two years ago, three years ago?
We have awards. The, the current, current award is yet to be implemented, probably in twenty twenty-six.
Okay.
Next year.
Okay.
Maybe I can uh.
Yeah, um. The manager, are you done?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, thank you so much. Okay, you can carry on.
If I can uh just uh. Add some, some things on. Uh for nursing division, uh in the last twelve months, I was the, the acting nursing manager. So one of the major. Uh issue that is uh also affecting everyone in the hospital, especially all, all sections. Is the manpower. We have big aging workforce, in the last five years, we had a three, three retirement exercises. We had so many deaths. So that uh, that. Uh is one of the issue that uh we have with uh manpower. So we have a lot of uh nurses who are sick, who are actually not working. So that's the additional uh impact that's on the workforce, especially nursing. Um. The other thing is um. Uh we have the deteriorating infrastructure that is uh. Also affecting our workforce because of the un, uh, uncond- unconditional environment. And so causing our nurses to be sick. We have a big number of nurses who are sick right now.
Why are they sick? Sorry.
Uh. Whether it's, it, it has a lot of contributing factors. Whether it's personal. Whether it's the workplace, because as uh my colleague on the, uh, the nursing manager has said. There is a lot of work. The nurses are double shifting, triple shifting.
Yeah.
Because of the manpower issue. Okay, most of the nurses are sleeping outside because currently the PHD compound, which is should be accommodating. Staff who are working shift. Currently. They are occupied by. Non-working staff, retired officers, terminated officers, families of retired officers. Which the management should have made some decision to evict those people. To accommodate those who are actually serving the organization right now. So this is one thing that the management, the board and the management of PHA have to take into consideration. Especially to house the staff who are actually working. So the nurses are really struggling from outside, trying to, you know, uh travel to work every day. They have to leave their family and come and transit in a house that is not conducive. Sometimes there is no water, there's no power, there is no gas, they are not cooking anything. And to ensure that patient care is provided, so that is one big issue that the organization have to. Take into consideration, see it as a priority to ensure that if you look after the staff, they are going to serve the organization, give the best to the organization, so. Uh. Uh chairman, I think uh this is one area that um the nurses have to be looked after. Because they are frontline workers. Uh. The other thing is um clinical governance, um in the previous administration, uh from the hospital perspective. Uh there was coordination, meaning you know that someone is looking at you, monitoring how you, you are performing. Right now. The authority has been removed from the. Uh from the management. Uh previously, we had the director nursing there, director medical services, director corporate services, and then. Now the PHA has come, it has withdrawn all the authority out. So if I'm the nursing manager, I don't really have the authority. Because that has been offloaded. I'm just looking at the, the patient care. Working so that I allocate the staff here and there. That's all I have to do. So. And then I don't have to, I don't have the authority to discipline as well. And PHA has failed the organization, especially when it came to staff discipline. In the last five years, there was no disciplinary actions or disciplinary committee meetings and. Staff uh going haywire, this so much, very hard to discipline staff, so. That is uh. One of the issue that is affecting the core business, our core business. Okay, going back to, I was one of the staff that was time a nurse, but I was involved in the hospital uh planning and projects. From twenty eighteen uh to twenty twenty-one. Okay, in the previous administration, we had. Uh, a roadmap or blueprints that you are looking, focus, focusing to make sure that you active, active. But when PHA came in, there is nothing to show, we don't have any roadmap, you know? Meaning we don't have plans. Where are you going to, how are you going to get there? So. While I was in the planning unit in the previous Mudali General Hospital, in twenty eighteen, we did some plans. And we got some monies through the PIP, PIP for the hospital redevelopment program that is going on, ongoing. Today, to this date. While I was in there, we got some monies. But when PHA came in, in twenty nineteen. We were thrown up, out in twenty, uh twenty by the incoming CEO. And there were monies in the trust account, especially for the hospital redevelopment. By now, we should have seen the hospital uh re-roofing, that is, we, we have so many, what we have uh mentioned already, the asbestos is still. Current, that is still there, uh we are supposed to uh remove those, uh re-roof the, all the wards there, we should, we, we supposed, we were supposed to. Put the reservoir tanks and all this to, you know, sustain uh when we had water disruptions and. Uh the question is, what happened to all the monies that were coming during those years? Uh especially when I left in twenty twenty. And I left with some monies that was in the trust account, especially tied to hospital uh projects. Uh so what really happened? So those are some areas that, um gray areas that uh. Uh. Is still causing us, especially the hospital, you can see that it's still. It's still yet to be fixed. The other thing is um from the nurse, nurse's perspective. Uh as you have mentioned or questioned in regards to our, uh, our nurses in the districts. For the hospital, it's more confined and you can still manage, especially when it comes to professional. Uh, uh professional, uh especially when it comes to licenser and all these, uh you can still manage, but. Uh. What is, we, we don't know what is happening to our nurses in the districts because, especially when it, you comes, it comes to monitoring their registrations and. Or when they have issues that they're, they're trying to, you know. At least communicate with the person who is in charge there at the level as a nurse that is not there. Especially in the management, there is no representation for the nurses. Bulk of the nurses, not only the hospital, bulk of the nurses, especially in the rural areas as well, so that is one, there's one gap there that. Uh yet to be um. Uh. May be taken on board.
Okay, uh sister, if, if, if there is an issue, if there is an issue to do with nurses. And um. She is responsible for all the nurses in the, the hospital. And if there's an issue that's, that's affecting all nurses in the province. And all these other nurses come in. Uh to discuss this matter. Um. Their grievances. Uh you're not gonna take care of their grievances, you only worry about. Your hundred and sixty-three nurses within the facility of Mudali Nausi. What about these nurses that are coming in from Rikos and Wallyum and Bogia and Osinabundi and Sumka? Who takes charge of their, their issues? I know there is a nurses association, which all of you is a part of. Just give me some thoughts on that.
That's the gap. That's the gap. We only meet when there's association issues, but when it comes to administrative.
Yeah.
They don't, they have anyone to report, they only report to the uh OIC and the program manager, who is completely a different professional.
That's right.
Professional.
The PHA egg does not cover that.
No, no.
Okay. Yeah, anything else?
No, unless you have any questions.
Alright, well, you mentioned something about disciplinary issues. Uh right now, if. A nurse is. In town at the horse race place. And she's not attending to her roster, duty roster, what happens to her? How do you deal with that?
If the nurses uh didn't turn up, show up for the shift. Uh we normally have this uh shift supervisors. Who oversee the place and if, if they identify that there's an officer who is absent, they fill in an incident for that officer. And then the, and then. The. We try to. Uh take them through the basic disciplinary process, like talking to them. And then refer them to the, the shift supervisor and the. Unit manager will liaise on that and then eventually they will have to refer the officer to nursing management. And then nursing management then will uh try to. Give a uh. Give them leave without pay, pay or such arrangements, but to really put them through disciplinary process. There's no disciplinary meeting with the PHA.
What happens in a case where? a nurse fails duties by administering wrong medication? How do you deal with that? Those, those sort of cases?
It's still, it's still the same process, but like I said, there's no meetings, it just go under the rug.
All right, and it goes further? And the patient takes the matter to court? Who stands seeing for the nurse?
We didn't actually, haven't had any incident like that, but currently minor issues are handled at their level, the managers' level. The major ones that require discipline, that is referred to the office. Otherwise, all little issues or little incidences are managed at the managers' level, at their level, units, because they have managers. We have certain levels of management. We have the nursing management, we have the clinical supervisors and then we have the shift supervisors. And then we have the unit managers. Unit managers are the ones that actually look after the unit. They manage the staff, the number of staff who works in that unit. They manage the physical resources, cement resource, everything in, at that unit, so. Whatever little incidents that is occurring in that section, the ward manager manages that, at that level. Unless and when it is serious, it is referred to the office of the manager to prepare charges. That charges goes through the disciplinary committees for deliberation and.
So you, you have a disciplinary committee within the PHA?
Yes, there should be and there is, but since, since I don't know how long, it has never been effective, effective.
Okay, all right. I'd like to have my corporate affairs and doctor in the front, please.
Thank you.
No, no, you can sit. We're just gonna talk about some issues relating to nursing. Doctor Jeremiah? Come. This discussion is leading me to ask few more questions regarding the legal side of things. When a doctor is implicated for an offense in his line of duty of what that matter a nurse, do we have legal avenues within PHA to, to, to address these issues? Doctor Jeremiah, you start with that, please.
I think it's Chairman, I think with the legal, legal issues, legal issues at the moment, we, we have two avenues to address those. I think one of the avenue where they can address this issue is taking the officer responsible to court. The other option will be the organization as a whole. But I think at this point in, in time, there's been a shift from getting the organization responsible from, for all incidences to now, it's now focused more on individual professional. All right, so I think we have a special, special, in line with this, we have doctors from Devonwood University who are required to also take on students who come for training at the provincial hospital. All right, so the MOU that is to be signed between Devonwood University and Medang PHA, one of the aspects in the MOU is the indemnity. Who's going to be responsible if any mistakes, any deaths happen or if any errors happen in terms of service delivery? Will the doctors be held personally responsible or the organization as a whole? But I think from experience, from the hospital setting, the organization is always held responsible for all incidences up till now.
If, if you have to, if, if, if a doctor or nurse in Modulon is implicated and taken to court, will the PHA Medang be responsible to engage a legal representation or this will be referred to the Department of Health?
I think it's the, it's the PHA, because the staff is employed under the Medang PHA. The defendant will be, the first defendant will be the officer. Second will be the Medang PHA. Then the, the health department and then you have the state also part of it.
Under the act, under the PHA act, is there any budgetary allocation for this sort of activities? Legal activities? Under your, your, your budget?
I think specifically for legal issues, there is no budget for legal issues. But normally when these legal issues arise, they normally paid out from the other operational expenses for legal fees. But I think that, that the process that the Attorney General's Office has advised is that for any legal matters that arise, the state agencies are required to ask the Attorney General's Office to represent them. Or if the cases are more for them to handle, then they will give advice, clearance for the organizations to appoint a private lawyer to take on both matters.
Thank you very much. You know, sometimes we overlook these issues and something pops up and it catches all off guard. So for, for future, PHA Medang should be prepared to take up any legal battle to protect your, your nurses and your doctors. So it's just a matter of discussing. PHA Director for Corporate Affairs, thank you, you know, once again to present yourself. There's few things I'd like to get you to clear. Firstly, I wanna touch on the Level Four facility that is coming up in Daigul. We will be having, I don't know, probably seventy to, seventy to one hundred plus staffing. What has PHA Medang done about this and if they've already started their recruiting exercise for the Level Four Rural Hospital in Bogia? Why I'm raising this matter now is because I've seen and witnessed world-class facilities being built and left standing idle for a number of years because of lack of staffing. And I do not wish to see my Level Four Hospital in Bogia go through the same scenario. So I'm just wondering what have you done from the PHA level? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Five years ago, we were going to advertise the vacant positions that are currently now being advertised. It did not happen. And until and unless we get all these positions occupied, we will do, start to do a restructure. We haven't started doing a restructure yet for the entire Medang PHA. So the DPM has withheld back our desire to market those four hundred and twenty-four positions until lately. So if we get all the staff on board, we make them settle and then we can do the restructure to take on board both the old positions, Bogia Hospital positions and other positions that we wish to take on board.
So at the moment now, there is nobody recruited for positions available in Bogia because the positions have not been advertised?
Um, yes and no. Yes and no. Yes is the current positions that the Bogia Health Centre staff are on are belong to Bogia Hospital. Bogia Health Centre does not have any position for any health workers at all. We need to do that again. So the medical superintendent that Dr. Jeremiah was referring to in the morning is part of the former Medang Provincial Administration structure that accommodated the rural hospital Bogia. So those positions belong to, if the hospital come on board, these positions will be automatically transferred back to rural Bogia and we have to create positions for Bogia Health Centre. And on top of that, we will have to create the other seventy positions for Bogia Hospital.
Okay, so this facility will be opened in February, March in twenty twenty-seven. Just give me some timeframe. How soon, how soon can that Level Four facility open for services? Say this is twenty twenty-five, we have all of twenty twenty-six and the facility will be handed over to PHA in twenty twenty-seven, February, March, around there. Between now and February twenty twenty-seven, are we able to recruit some staff for that facility? If we don't, that facility might stand there for six to one year without being utilized. I'm just concerned about that.
Thank you, Chairman. I wouldn't, at this point in time, I wouldn't give you an exact exact date, but we are anticipating completion of the recruitment process towards the end of this year. And if that is done whilst this is happening, we shall be looking at the restructure process. Now, at the moment, you would have heard everyone in this room who have spoken already talked about human resource, human resource. Also, at our human resource department or division, the division itself lacked enough capacity to go ahead and do something very fast. So we are hoping that this current recruitment, we are hoping to get the HR manager on board so that person can assist us, facilitate the process of restructure and recruitment. And also, when we do that, we will have to present it again to the Department of Personal Management. And that's where the catch is. Department of Personal Management will allow certain number of staff to operate in the facilities or in an organization, so to speak. Because they have their own cut-off line, I think, ceiling. And they will have to deliberate, they will have to look at our justification. I don't know how long that will take and they will have to present it to the finance department for funding. And if the finance department don't come good, the process continues and we keep waiting. So that is the limbo we are in. But to at least get something going towards December thirty-first, I should hope we should have notified all the applicants, four hundred and twenty-four applicants who had applied for the positions.
So those four hundred and twenty-five positions to be advertised, that includes the positions for the Level Four Facility?
They are vacant funded positions, not Level Four.
Or for existing facilities only?
For the existing facilities. These are current vacant positions that are not occupied. So we still need to get that one on board and then we will do a restructure again to get the new ones.
I don't see any light in the tunnel. It's, it's gonna just be like the other facilities that are standing there. It's a big problem. So Department of Personal Management has spoken to you? That they are, they're going to assist you, they're going to fund these positions, they're gonna create these new positions? Have you made any leeway? Have you spoken to them regarding the new facility?
We have not spoken to them as yet.
All right.
Chairman.
Yes.
Can I make a few remarks on the Bogia District Hospital?
Yes.
All right. As far as I'm, I'm concerned, all the positions that are, staff are on and are working at Bogia Health Centre belong to Bogia District Hospital. So they are already on the positions that belong to the Bogia District Hospital.
The Level Four Facility?
Level Four Facility. That's number one for us to be clear on. Number two, when do we start operations of the hospital? All right. For us to start the operations of the hospital, we will have to have the outpatient building done. The outpatient emergency has to be done. The X-ray department has to be done. The laboratory has to be done. I think pharmacy is complete. When they have inspection, pharmacy is complete. All the staff houses are complete. The social clinic, welfare clinic is, is complete. So these are the key areas where we operate on the hospital. Patients come in, the first contact point is the outpatient and the emergency. So long as you have the outpatient, the emergency open, the hospital is open. Then when patients come in there, doctors will have to diagnose the conditions. You need the X-ray, you need the pathology to be open. Once you do the diagnosis, you, if the patient has to be hospitalized, you'll have to have the ward open and ready. All right. The different category of patients that come in. If it is a pregnant woman, that mother has to be housed in the ONG ward. If it is an adult, he or she must be housed in the medical ward. If it is a child, must be in the pediatric ward and so on. So that's, that's how the, the hospital functions. The first point of entry is the emergency and the outpatient. So all these are key facilities that have to be built, completed and as long as the hospital team is satisfied that they can start operating as a hospital, we can liaise with the health department to give green light for them to start operating. In terms of staffing, housing, we don't have any problems. Staff housing are already there. We can pull in the staff from Bogia Health Centre down to start running the services in there. All right. In the long term, as we move along, they will be working very closely with us because under the current structure, they report to the Director of Creative Health Services. The Bogia District Hospital and Rikos District Hospital, these two report to the Director of Creative Health Services. So that's where the hospital, provincial hospital will work closely with the district hospital, the Level Four Facilities, to start running the services. So that's, that's basically how we will be doing. When it comes to restructure for additional positions for any other task, I think that's something that the corporate services will be responsible for that. But operational-wise, it's my responsibility, my team's responsibility to work along with them to make sure that these Level Four Facilities are operational and they start seeing patients.
Thank you so much, Doctor, and shed some light on my doubts and questions because I don't want to see the facility, the world-class facility completed and standing idle. So I just want to make sure that as soon as it's complete, So I just want to make sure that as soon as it's complete, when everything is ready, there's no excuse, we shouldn't be using the facility. The people of Bogia shouldn't be running into town to get medical services that are not offered in the health centres in Bogia. They have the hospital there. They have to start accessing services at the hospital. That also relieves you people up here at Modelon Hospital. So we have to get that ready. Everyone will have to work hard to get that hospital ready for operations as soon as it's completed. So I've made a commitment to the contractor and ADB that that hospital must be opened January, February, March, whereabouts, should be open. So the contractor knows our expectations. Now, corporate services director, there's few issues I'd like to raise again with you. I think you were here, you heard. Firstly, something very alarming is the pharmacy. The air conditioning in the pharmacy is not working hundred percent well. They have their requests already in your office. How soon will you be addressing those issues? Two more additional air conditioning and the space within the pharmacy and yeah, those issues, the pharmacy.
Thank you. I've heard it in the morning, so we will make a commitment. I didn't know about it until I was in the room, so I heard it already. So we will make a commitment to that.
Okay, that's good.
For the spacing, I cannot say anything at the moment because it's within the redevelopment project. Once they get that scope done and get it approved, they can go ahead and do the extension. Thank you.
It's very important. We have to have enough space in the pharmacy to house all our boxes of medicine instead of sitting them outside in the weather, and it's no good for the quality of the medicine. Now, the two nurses can be excused, and I would like to ask the chairman and water board to come up front. Let's deal with water board. First, for the two of you, chairman and the water board rep, state your names, your position, and how long have you been in that capacity for record purposes? Water board, we start with you.
Thank you, Chairman. My name is Darius Lala. I've been with Water PND for the last seven years, but in Medeng, it's two and a half years. I'm an engineer by profession from Unitec.
Thank you. What, what are? We'll just let the chairman introduce himself first and then we can go ahead with the issues that we have with the hospital. Chairman, go ahead. Put switch on your microphone. That's it.
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, my name is Dr Bogafiga, not a medical doctor. Been in this position for a year and two months, so from September last year. Appointed the chairman of the board, so yeah, thank you.
Okay, water board, I think you've already understood the issues our modular hospital is facing with water. What are your plans for improving water usage at the hospital? And you were here and you heard the maintenance man in charge speak about the issues with overflowing of raw syrids, but one of your pump stations down there is not working well, and we would like to hear from you on those matters. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman, once again. I think with the organization, Water PND is committed to ensure that we deliver the services to the, wherever the branches are. And that's our commitment, that's the commitment of the organization. However, we have certain issues that affects the supply of water. And I'll just go through a few, few of those. And I think the main one is power supply. When I was appointed here in twenty-three, twenty twenty-three, I did an assessment myself on the capacity of the treatment plant. Now, we are only producing about seventy, fifty percent of the supply of production, which means that we still have a lot of capacity to supply the township.
You mean you, you have enough water?
We have, we have enough water.
But only fifty percent of that is being utilized?
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, explain a little bit further.
Yeah, it's not, not because of usage, usage wise. It's because of the current population that we have. So even if we have the increase in population or increase in usage, we still got the capacity to, so we don't need any new
Improvements to assist.
And all that, yes.
You have enough?
Exactly, yeah, yeah. So power, power supply is, is our main, one of the main factors that affects our, our supply products and our in the last, the last probably eight to ten years, we got three standby generators that were damaged by, by the power supply because of fluctuations. So we got also, that's those five hundred kilos.
So those are your standby generators at the treatment plant?
That's right, yeah.
That when PNG power goes off, they kick in?
They kick in.
And you have continuous flow of water?
We continue production, but on a limited scale because of our capacity, yeah. So we got, we got two, we got one, one at the intake. Because we got two different, two different plant.
Yes.
One is the intake, we call the intake, and one is the treatment plant. The intake sucks the water from, from the river and, yeah. So those, so, so we have two generators that are running if there is a power blackout. So we just have the new one that we installed back early last year. So it's now down again. And we have, yeah, we'll, we'll deal with that, so. So those are the, the main factors, eh?
So your, your only issue is PNG power? So when the power goes off, your capacity drops. You can't supply the consumers what they require.
Yeah.
So that's when you need your standby generators to kick in, to assist, and your standby generators are down?
That, that's right, yeah. That's, that's just over last month. The standby gen set, the new gen set that we had, I just broke down last month because of the continuous power blackouts.
How many generators have gone through similar?
We now have three sitting at the intake.
So three of those generators were blown because of blackouts?
Yeah.
Now, have you thought about installing safety systems?
We, we have, we have the systems there. It's just like operationally, you run for long hours. Standby gen set like the other fellow mentioned, it's only probably for a couple of hours. But when you have a long periods of blackouts, it continues to run and then, yeah.
So right now, there is no standby generator in operation?
Not at this stage.
If PNG power goes off now, water will stop?
Yeah.
Where do we get water in the hospital if this afternoon there's a blackout?
Chairman, in the past, we've, we've cut that water in through contractors that are working on the, on the road. We normally use their water trucks to cut water in. Lately, we cannot do that because the company that supplies water, does the cutting of water, collects water from Wagor. And we cannot use the same water truck to bring in water for the hospital. So we've completely stopped on cutting water. We just wait for the PNG power to come on, water is supplied, and then we operate. So we come to a complete scale down, and that's how we've been operating.
Okay, so we hear our friends from Southern Cross will be here today?
Yes.
And they're going to start construction tomorrow?
Correct.
And that'll take another two weeks for those tanks to be ready?
Correct.
So if, if PNG power shuts down this afternoon, till tomorrow morning, the hospital will not receive any water at all?
Yeah, if, if we, if the contractors cannot get the generator back running, then we won't have any water at all.
So you, you have a contractor?
Yeah.
Who's maintaining your equipment?
Yeah.
Especially your standby generators?
That's right. With the current one, we engage a contractor to, to work on it, yeah, so.
So they're working on it now?
Yeah, yeah.
They're on it now?
That's right, yeah.
When was it down?
A few weeks ago, two, two weeks back, we got it up and running, and then it broke down again, and
What's, what's the problem? What's, what's?
Yeah, it's to do with electrical faults.
Some change of a switch being blown or diodes being blown or?
Not the, not the switch, transfer switch, but to do with the dip switches, like inside the
Yes. They get blown, huh?
Yeah, yeah, so they
What sort of generators are those?
We have the Cummins.
From Hastings?
Yeah, we got it from the Chinese. Sorry, sorry about that.
That is a problem.
Yeah.
We, what, what a board can do better? If we get generators from a local distributors like Cummins, you know, Cummins have a very good backup system. They've got parts, they've got a very good field offices, field team, technical people. And if you buy your equipment from them, they are the best. They will provide the best technical backup service, so you won't have issues. When you get stuff like that coming from the Chinese, Chinese Cummins brand, then we will have issues, continue to, to have issues in the future. Anyway, so what's your, your management or your superiors telling you? Are they gonna buy any more generators?
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll get this one fixed first to see whether it will continue to
That's the one to help to pump out?
No, sucking in water for
From the river?
From the river, that's right.
That one is down?
Yeah, yeah.
But the one helping to pump out?
It's, it's working.
It's working?
Yeah.
Oh, so as long as you've got water in the tank?
Yeah, we can, we can still supply.
Still, okay, alright. I was a little bit worried. Okay, alright. Now, tell us about the problem at the, your pump out station here, outside the hospital. Why is it, why is it always back flowing and the rubbish is coming into the hospital and onto the main highway? What is the problem?
I think the main issue or the problem that we have with the, the pump station is what, you know, those the rubbish that not supposed to go into those the sewer?
Yeah.
Line that it goes in, then it gets blocked, it blocked off the, the pumps, so, and then it got, you know, it burns off the the line, the electrical wirings, eh? So that's, that's the main, the main issue that we, we have with, with the pump station now.
That's for the hospital only?
That's for the hospital only.
All the rubbish in the hospital goes through that?
Exactly, yeah.
So whatever rubbish that goes to that and gets clogged up is from the hospital?
Yeah, yeah. I think before I came, the guy previous, the previous manager, I think they had a discussion, and they put through a request for the hospital to look at the strainer, strainer system. To ensure that whatever rubbish that comes in, it gets stopped and it just allows
Water goes into the pump?
But it hasn't been done, so that's why it continues to affect the pump.
The board chairman is here, the finance lady is here, you are here, let's get that sorted out. It's only a strainer?
Yeah.
Are we going to, are we going to buy it or are we going to build it?
We can just build it, yeah.
Who can build it for us?
Well, we can seek Fimali?
Fimali?
Or Sigma to help out.
Is it going to come out from your finances or from them?
I think it's from the hospital.
Can you make it your business to go to Fimali and ask them to give you a quote for that strainer? And you can come back and see one of these two the board chairman or the corporate affairs director, and let's get that strainer inserted in the system.
Sure.
How long will it take you to insert that strainer?
I think it should, should take half a day for
One day?
Probably half a day, yeah.
Half a day?
Probably somebody, yeah.
Can we get that sorted out, chairman? Put your microphone on, please. So we should be able to do that? That's something we can achieve right now. Let's get it done. Kapasa?
Ah, Darius.
Darius. Darius, please, we can't just discuss this matter and let it go? This is an opportunity where what we can do, let's do it. What's within our reach, let's achieve it, let's do it. So that is one big problem. The other issue with storm drains, water backing up into the labor ward, eh? Labor ward? That issue is, is to do with, I think, the city council. And so that's got nothing to do with water PNG. Now, are you aware that they are setting up Southern Cross tanks in the hospital?
Yeah, I, I do, yeah.
You're aware of that?
Aware of it, yeah.
Okay. You, you're gonna have some sort of inspection done?
I think
Once those tanks are installed?
I think it's, it's good to involve Water PND, so
Absolutely.
We can all try and assist.
Absolutely.
And see, and all like, was, sorry, governor spoke to me about it and I suggested that we need to hook up the system to the tank so that
Yeah.
You know, gets filled up, and when we have an issue with the, the supply, at least they can still use it.
Yes, yes.
As well as the water that is provided is being treated to
That's right.
To those minimum requirement by the well health organizations, so
Yes.
For consumption and all that, so I would, you know, suggest that we hook it up, so it's, it's only for safety reasons.
So once, they said it, it'll take two weeks to be installed. This people are here now, today, they'll be here, so I think they will start tomorrow. While they are installing the tanks, it's good for you to come around and have a look what they are doing. And once it's completed, it'll be good for you to also be there when they hand it over to the management of the PHA. So we all understand what's going on, what's happening. And when we have issues, we know what to do.
Yeah.
Board chairman and corporate affairs director and manager, medical services. You got anything else to inform the, our friend from water board before he leaves, before he's being excused?
Probably I'll, I'll re- reemphasize the importance of water in the hospital, so at least we are all on the same page. Alright, operating a hospital, hospital, we, we need water. Water is basically the bottom line in our services. Because you look at the staff handling patients, patients sleeping on the bed, they handle medically
Because you look at the staff handling patients, patients sleeping on the bed, they handle medical equipment. Uh they handle drug charts, paper documents, everything, so. In the process of dealing with patients on a daily basis, there's cross infection. They transfer bacteria from patients onto themselves, themselves onto the papers. And it 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 also all works like that. All right, so water is very important because. It helps us to disinfect our our staff, uh our facilities, sinks, toilets. Uh water also helps patients to live on on a daily basis, so. Uh for a hospital, when there is no water, we cannot force the hospital to operate without water. When there's no water, definitely we will have to close down the hospital. Uh not really close down the hospital, but we we scale down on our services, we attend to only the emergencies, right? At the moment, we we have some uh temporary setups, tanks around the hospital area. Uh basically, all the buildings have asbestos, that's what we suspect the roof, so those roofs where we have. Uh suspected asbestos on, we have not connected any uh storage tanks. But those with roofing iron, we've actually installed uh tanks, water pumps that actually supply water within the wood area. All right, that's that's for temporary measure, but when you look at the solid system. If water goes out for more than one day, the water within the waste. Escapes and the.
Solid was.
Waste becomes solid. When water comes back in the next two days, three days, it's already clogging the pipeline. So it results in backflow into the hospital woods. So I think uh the importance of us operating a hospital is for us to have a continuous supply system. Where the system is continuously wet and flushing is easy for us. All right, uh ted- deadly to do with the pump, I think the water P N G team are very helpful at at times. When we contact them to come and put on the pump, pump water out, they normally come. The problem is not with them, but the problem with the pump is with us. When we don't supply tissues, toilet tissues to the patients, they grab hold on to anything that can clean themselves. And those are flushed into the toilet pot, and it eventually ends up in the pump station. When they clog the pump, I think that's where the problems. Uh I think I've, I I have a design from Water P N G back in twenty twenty-three. Uh I asked them to revise the design uh early this year. I have a copy of the design. I'll probably send a copy back to Water P N G, and then they can liaise with uh Fimali. Uh revise the codes, give it back to us, and probably we'll run it past our project team to take this onboard. But I think the design for the uh filtering system for the hospital is already in place now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much.
Can I just?
Yes, yes, go ahead.
Thank you, doctor. Uh I think there's uh with with the uh current issues that we have, uh we've looked at a few few options for. For to maintain supply, so we look at look at alternative options. One, uh I think last year, uh we had uh few survey around the place for bore water, just for standby system, so.
Yeah.
If we have the main systems uh down, at least we got the standby system that we can use. Uh so that's that's one option.
Uh uh hang on, you're planning to bore water?
Yeah.
For the hospital?
Not not for for the whole town.
Oh.
Just for, as a standby, standby system. Uh secondly is uh we have, we currently have uh Smack as a contractor and are looking at upgrading the the. The treatment plan. Uh our treatment plan, the up at the planning, so they're they're uh currently doing the first stage. Of the uh project.
Are they here already?
Yeah, they've they've been here for the last two months, yeah.
Oh, they're going and coming?
Yeah, yeah.
Two months now?
Yeah. So they have certain co- subcontractors that they bring, bring into.
So our friends from Australia are going to fund?
Yeah, the World, the World Bank, yeah.
They're gonna redo the old thing, huh?
Not 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 redo the old thing, but uh just look at the current uh system that we have, the plan.
And improve it?
See what uh what we need to improve on to ensure that uh we maintain the services, yeah.
Smack's doing that?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Uh chairman, I just want to uh head a bit on this one. Um I I want to go down to Daigul. Uh um I had the exchanges that went on uh previously. Um for, I heard about uh everything that's, you know, that needs to be done, but I I think. Some of the most important utilities that are probably not being considered, and I've not been fully briefed on this. But water supply, um to me is a very important uh aspect again, as we've said. Um they they did say that there's gonna be a bore water well drilled. Um I'd like to, and I've mentioned this to um uh the P H A C E O. Um Manuranguru Assembly Authority just on the other side has already drilled a well, and they've got uh. Um all the assessments done on the um quality, water quality, everything. And we need to get the um A D B. To actually look at that and see if there's a possibility of just pulling the line across from there. Into uh where the hospital is. Secondly, uh what is? I have not even, I've not even uh heard or seen anything on waste management. You know, we've got, there's gonna be domestic waste and then we have uh hospital waste as well, apart from uh incinerators. Uh where do the, you know, domestic wastes go to? How do they get treated before being discharged? Where do they get discharged? So I hope the next stage of that uh chairman will uh consider that as well. Uh for the hospital, and it's not just for that one, but uh we're looking at. Um six other, five other district hospitals coming up uh for level four, so I know that. A few weeks back, they've been here, went to Volume and went to Sidor as well. Um so I hope that uh the planning for all of this also involve the state. Uh team here, Water P N G, um with especially in terms of waste management and water supply. Thank you, chair. Ju- just just to add on to that as well, yeah.
Yes, chairman, P H A, thank you so much. Uh those matters are, they have already been discussed. Um I'm discussing those issues with the contractor on the ground now, together with A D B.
Okay.
And we are looking at that, beginning of next year, we should have something in place. Do with power and water. So that is an ongoing discussion between myself and the. The contractor and uh A D B.
Okay.
So those matters will be attended to. Uh as part of the preparations uh before the hospital is being handed over. So we are working on that very closely together.
Thank you.
Now, our friend from Waterboard, you can be excused?
Uh chair, before he goes, can I?
Yes, yes.
Can I just pop in a question?
Go ahead.
To our manager for Water P N G.
Yes.
Now, it cost us about eight thousand plus to bring these two persons from Potmosby to Medeng. They're currently on the ground, they will do the installation. Now, for sustainability purposes, we would need a Water P N G, your expertise. To come around from time to time to do the inspection of our of our two tanks. And in the near future, I think we are going to do drilling, bore, and then for the treatment part of it. Our facility boys can um see Water P N G for that, because uh they are experts in treating the water, so. Uh it's only a uh question to the manager. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I I think we, I have discussed with a few people as well, so thank you for that offer, so we'll we we'll be around to assist.
Yeah, like I said, uh it's going to start tomorrow, so tomorrow onwards, uh you might want to come around and have a look. What they're doing until the the two tanks are installed.
Yeah.
And uh we all are on the same page going forward. So you may be excused, uh.
Thank you.
Forgot your name again?
Uh, Darius.
Darius?
Yeah.
You may be excused. Thank you for your time.
Yeah.
Our friend from P N G Power. Should be very close now. Chairman, why why I'm desperate to get uh P N G Power here while you are here? So that um we can come up with some understanding. Understanding on um what I learnt during the inquiry in Engao is that. If there is an issue with generation of power, uh P N G Power being the owner of. Power generation and power transmission and power distribution and power marketing, that's their business. And if there's something wrong within your uh in within the hospital. Uh P N G Power will not touch it. They will not attend to it. They can come and inspect it, they can see it. But they won't be able to do anything. Uh CEO, please come up. Sorry, I forgot to ask you to come up. Because what I discovered is that it's it's it's. They will need some sort of um talk right from P H A. To do anything to do with power within the hospital, and that goes to all the hospitals right around the country. And so during that moment of twenty hours, Engao had no power. And they said seven lives were lost. P N G Power knew exactly what was wrong, but they can't touch it. Because it's not within their jurisdiction to do that. So that problem went on for twenty hours while Enga was looking for a contractor. So I've made it my business to ask P N G Power. At the time, the C E O was there, uh for Engao and P N G Power to sign an M O A. So P N G Power can be called anytime to come into the premises of the hospital. If there's something wrong. They can identify the problem and they can start working on it upon that agreement. So this is a similar kind of arrangement I would like us at Modulon to do with P N G Power. It'll be like an M O A, we have to draft it, and we have to sign it with P N G Power. That we can do. We don't need parliament approval, we don't need department approval. This is from a government entity to another government entity. And it'll save us a lot of trouble to get this M O A in place. We can sign it and we can. Work with it. And it not not in terms of maintenance only. P N G Power can start training. Your local staff within your maintenance division. And also, they can assist you with protecting your equipment, your delicate equipment in the hospital. So those are some of the services that P N G Power can offer upon us agreeing to sign this agreement. And that is a way forward for the entire country, I believe. So that's why I want him to be here. And we can discuss this with the hospital, and we can start drafting this M O U. So it's not just for maintenance, it's for everything else. So they can have access to the facility anytime when called upon. So he'll be here, but he's still on his way. So that's that's something I want you here for us to discuss. Now, the other issue is you heard while you were sitting at the back. The compound at the back of Modulon Hospital, P H D compound. And that compound is infested with criminals and vagrants. That compound is meant to be for staff for the hospital now. I want to know what what the board is planning to do. What are your plans for that compound? So we can give our nurses some space to. Move in and live next to the hospital and attend to their core duties. Thank you, chairman.
Uh, thank you, thank you, Jay. I I think that's one of the uh core issues that the board has deliberated on. Um currently, the P H A doesn't have a title uh to the land. We only have a a C A O, I think it was uh, they applied for that in twenty twenty-one or so. Uh around there thereabouts, and we got that's a certificate of authorized occupancy. That needs to be um and I I believe there's a redesign of um. Um the hospital grounds being put in place for total uh rehabilitation. Um and I've I've gone through that a bit. I think that one is with um uh N D O H at the moment. Um and considering this, consideration has been given to the P H D compound. And I've I've seen a list of uh people who were there, as you have said, some are, um you know. The deceased uh parents have moved on, they're supposed to move out from there, but they're still sitting there. Uh retired staff are still uh staying in that that compound. Um there's been various courtish court cases brought up, orders being brought up, some of them very questionable. But um uh the P H A right now really has no title to that land. If we go to court to, if we want to evict them, they'll say you don't have any title. So uh what we've we've done is uh the board has already instructed the um. Uh management to get um or let Stevenson here organize to get uh down to to Mosby. Um to transfer, convert the C A O into a title. So that uh P H A can then um issue um evicts and orders based on the title. Yeah, and then we can go into um rehabilitation of that area for our uh staff. And whatever else we need to do there. Thank you, chair.
Thank you. Thank you very much. That that clears the air uh on why we really can't do much about that compound at the moment. We are just sitting and watching, so people should understand now that we don't have the title over that land. And we are in the process of acquiring that land legally, and then when it's ours, we can make the decisions.
Yep.
Okay, now, see, um chairman, the other matter of interest that I uncovered during this inquiry. Is the fifteen million kina for rehabilitation work of the hospital that is sitting there. Um for two years now, and I don't see any reason why that money is sitting there for two years accumulating interest. For the bank and our people are suffering. Uh there's bureaucratic rate tape involved that I understand. And um what's your board? And what's your board, what's your board doing about this money sitting there? When are we going to start using those monies? I'd like to know.
Thank you, Chairman. It's, that's my concern. It's also the concern of the board. The board, the PHA exes, you know, the PHA has a right to sue and be sued. It can procure, it can sale, sell assets. It can, it can do anything that is within its powers. Now, the, it's HSIP, I believe, that's the fifty million that was entered to and given to the board, to those PHA, pardon me, sat there because there was no proper board in place at the time. And there's questionable, there's some questions, I'll just say that, hanging around the administration. So nothing was really done on that until the new board was sworn in. And then we had deliberated on this one. The board has already talked to Acting Secretary. We've got the approval from Department of Health to proceed with this. My biggest concern is that we've got a project steering committee that's supposed to be another layer of bureaucracy that we left to then approve the work plans and the budget and everything else before the work is actually carried out. My concern is if the board makes the decisions, then why do we have, is there any other body above the board? Is there need for a project steering committee? I mean, is it, is it written in stone that there's a policy in place that I understand it's a PIP funding, but what's the, what's the purpose of monitoring and evaluation units within, for example, Department of National Planning and Monitoring? We can have our own internal project steering committee in place here, the technical evaluation committee. We can use the provincial procurement committee to procure. And if the board has given the final decision and then it has to go through another exercise of another committee again, then there's probably no need for the board, Chair. Might as well remove PHA boards and allow the project steering committees to. I wanted this job done started in January. And it's coming to December and I still do not have my hospital renovated. Thank you, Chair.
Okay. What would be your advice if I have to take this up with the Minister for Health? I am planning to discuss this with the Minister for Health to issue something like an executive order from the minister down to the board to authorize you to go ahead, tender those projects and get them off the ground. Tell me your thoughts on this.
Chairman, the, I think it's the National Planning, Department of National Planning, Monitoring are the ones who who chair that committee. You have to speak to the Minister for National Planning and Monitoring. The Health Minister is, is just, I guess, a go-between, the NDOH. National Planning allocates the funding. And we are supposed to be the ones who are implementing this.
So that check was delivered to you by National Planning?
Well, it was given to, by National Planning to the Minister for Health.
Okay. It's, it's what, HSIP?
HSIP.
So it's the responsibility of National Planning now?
Yes, I believe so.
So I don't have to see the Minister for Health with this regard? I have to see the National Planning Minister?
I think it's, it would be wise, Chair, to speak to Health Minister and speak to, and then speak to the National Planning Minister as well.
All right, thank you. I'm going to take it upon myself to do that when I get a chance.
Appreciate that, yeah.
Chairman, as we all are aware, Medeng PHA has been dragged into the mud. It was one of the worst performing PHAs with records of corruption and misuse and misappropriation and all that before you got in and before your new management got in. Now, I, I, I know that some of these matters are before the court. I'd like you to advise me or just inform me, where are we now with this matter? Will someone be held responsible? Or we're just going to forget about all this and just carry on as if nothing happened?
Thank you, Chairman. I've, I've not received any advice from the police, police team that has that has done the arrest and has brought the matter to court. We've not, as far as I'm concerned, we've not actually received any update from the CID team, fraud team responsible for this. Yes, there was, there were a couple of staff that were being arrested. And I think the investigation needs to go deeper. But I don't know what, what is handicapping the police investigation or the prosecution of this. Is it, has it got to do with documents not complete? I, I have absolutely no idea. So I'll take this up with the CEO and they can, they can follow up on this, on this matter with the CID.
Thank you, Chair. I would ask the CEO and the Director for Corporate Services and Doctor for Medical Services, manager in charge, to give your last thoughts on what we can do to improve services in Modulon Hospital, what the provincial government can do, what I as the Chairman of Permanent Parliamentary Committee on Health Matters can do. So all of us can have some input into how we can improve our health services at the Modulon Hospital. I'll give you this opportunity to, to express your last views on it before we close. We start with Doctor.
Thank you, Chairman. Before I make any, any recommendations to the Chair of the Committee, I'd like to briefly state the status of the hospital. So we appreciate where we are now, the level of service we are offering and why it's important for us to address all the issues that we've discussed for the continuity of services for our people in Medeng. All right. The national health services standards, one of the very important thing that we should, I think it's for us to be aware of. When you, when you say a level five hospital, when you say a level five hospital, it means that you have to have five specialist disciplines in the hospital to be qualified as a level five hospital. Number one, you'll have to have an emergency physician who runs the outpatient and the emergency department. Number two, you must have an, a physician who runs the internal medicine division. Then you must have a gynecologist who runs services for women's health. Then you must have a general surgeon who runs surgical services in the hospital. Then you must have a pediatrician who runs child health services. When you have all these five specialists on the ground that are functioning, services are running smoothly, then you are qualified to call the facility a level five hospital. All right. For the case of Medeng Provincial Hospital, we have all these five disciplines already on the ground. In addition to this, we have an additional specialist on board, which is the anesthetist. He runs the operating theater and the intensive care unit. So that's an added bonus for us as a, as a provincial hospital. So from the level five with an additional specialist, we are already operating at a level six now. All right. We, we have an ophthalmologist, Dr. David Pow, who is here with us. That's an additional specialist for us as a provincial hospital. All right. We are already way past the level five to a level six specialist status. All right. Under surgery, we have subspecialist under general surgery. We're not only providing general surgery, but we have an orthopedic surgeon who deals with all the bone issues, reconstruction of bones. We have an orthopedic surgeon who spoke yesterday. He's here with us. Apart from that, Dr. Sammy Thomas, the former CEO, is a neuro surgeon. Very few neuro surgeons in the country. And we are very, only three, we are very privileged to have one here with us in Medeng. Apart from that, we also have specialist surgeons. We have one who is a specialist in pediatric surgery, who is based here in Medeng. And then you have head and neck surgery also here in Medeng. So according to the national health services standard, we have gone past the level five provincial hospital status to a level six hospital status. All right. Because of that, you can see that the demand for registrars. Once you have a specialist employed in a hospital, you have registrars who are trainees that train under this specialist. So we attract registrars. The minimum you can go is two to three registrars, best specialist. Not only that, but we have trainees coming in from Divine Wood University. So apart from us providing healthcare services to the people of Medeng, we are also a training hospital and that's very important that the committee must take on board. Because as a training hospital, we have special needs. One, we need manpower. We need the funding allocation to keep these specialists here in Medeng. So that they continue to deliver the service, they provide the training with Divine Wood University. These are very, very important for us as a hospital. All right. We have only, apart from Medeng Provincial Hospital, we have Mosby General Hospital. These are the only two training hospitals in the country that train doctors. All right. So for us, I think the challenges of funding, the challenges of our medical supplies, the challenges of all these little things that affect staff welfare, there are everyday operational needs. There's a vehicle to pick them up, to come and work. If it is in the night, there have to be twenty-four hours vehicle to pick them. If there's an emergency, there is always vehicle available to pick them. So these are important issues that affect them as, affect their welfare and their status. All right. We've lost one of our physician. He's moved from Medeng Provincial Hospital now joining Divine Wood University. We don't have a physician that takes, takes care of internal medicine, all adult medical conditions. All right. So what am I saying? The point I'm trying to make here is that Medeng Provincial Hospital is not only providing specialist services as a level five. We are already operating as a level six. We are getting special, special cases from outside the provinces come here to seek help from us. All right. Then we have the biggest challenge of having trainees, medical students, health extension officers, nurses, CSWs, high trainees, they're coming in from Divine Wood University. All right. So our status as a hospital has to be recognized by the committee, made recommendation, special recommendation to Parliament. And in terms of budgetary allocation, we must be given an increased budget allocation for the hospital. Since we are a training hospital, apart from being a training hospital, we have a very good working relationship with the Institute of Medical Research. All researches, clinical researches, research for test of new drugs, anti-malarials, anything that they have on their research agenda, they are using the hospital as a research facility. So we have these very important stakeholders that we work closely with. So in terms of budget, very important, we'd like to see increase in budget. In terms of manpower, there has to be special consideration for Medeng PHA. The CEO has to be empowered. So when we need urgent recruitment of registrars, urgent recruitment of registrars, resident medical officers, the CEO has the power to do decisions on the spot and recruit staff in. That's very important for us. All right. Like what Professor Bollner made mention yesterday, currently he is the only one specialist working. We cannot bring in registered work under him because of the bureaucratic rate tape, the, the process that we need to comply to the DPM. And so we cannot bring in a registrar in and he's taking calls twenty-four seven by himself. He's also needs to go and teach at the Divine Wood University. So these issues may eventually affect him and he may decide to leave Medeng. All right. Apart from all this, we have this cervical cancer clinic. There is the first in the country that has been established, piloted by Professor Bollner, started here in Medeng and is now spreading throughout the country. We have these professionals here on the ground. They are working here. They want to stay here. But all these challenges may eventually force them to leave us and move out. So I think my appeal now is to the committee, through the committee, to Parliament, to the Health Minister, to have a special recognition for us, the hospital and especially Medeng PHA, for special consideration in all these aspects of our discussions here.
Thank you, Dr. Jeremiah. I would request, I would request for you to put that in writing. Whatever you just informed me as the Chair of the Committee, I would like for you to put that in writing and pass it on to me. So I can try and assist and do whatever I can in my capacity as the Chairman. Most of what you said is very, very important for the hospital, for the province. And most importantly, the services that we can, we can, we can give a lot more, but we are not. Modulon is not. We are qualified and we are ready to work, but the circumstances that we work under does not allow us to fully utilize the skills or the ability that we have. It's already within the hospital. So I would very much ask, want to see that in writing from you. Just how you explained it, put it all in writing for me so I can take it up further. Chairman, any last words from you?
Yes, Chairman, thank you. My, my concern, a key concern obviously for every Chairman is we don't have the funds to run the PHA. Medeng Province population is estimated around eight hundred thousand. So we, we are not a small province by any measure. We are making a, we are going to make a submission under the restructuring. The board has already advised for us to get a fourth directorate in place. So this eases the burden a bit and it spreads it across. And that, that will come. My concern is that a lot of times when people talk about PHA, they think that Modulon Hospital is the, is PHA. They forget that the six districts of this They forget that uh the six districts of this province are the PHA. And that Medeng Provincial Government together with um the Governors, you know, signed an MOA with uh uh Health Minister, uh that they will take control and, and uh co-fund and, and support uh PHAs. That's why um board members are actually appointed through the PEC process and then recommended for NEC Gazette. Um, I'm grateful uh that uh Medeng Provincial Government has been very, very supportive uh through the, you're a member of the JPP, uh BPC and uh we have, we have seen tremendous assistance coming from uh um the provincial government. We really do appreciate that. Um, I think the Governor is on to something else now. He's looking at better diagnostic facilities for us. Um, he's talking with uh different partners so that we can have good uh um scanning machines uh for better diagnose, diagnosis of patients. Um. There will be a PEC and a, a submission made to um the PEC for, I think this government, Governor's commitment there and he, he made that announcement again when he opened the um, uh renovated, um no, the rebuilt um pediatric ward for the, for the children. Um, that they'll be, to be supporting from next year onward, 2 million kina annually to um the PHA. So would like you to support that when you um have your meeting.
Yeah.
Um, because that's going to be very, very important for us to um support um our province. Um, I'm also aware, uh Chair, that uh every district has a health component budget built into them as well. Um, and if um three O Office can make recommendation to, it's not just Medeng Province, but uh all the other provinces in the country, that um the DDAs should sign their service level agreements, the MOAs with PHA. So uh we can work together to utilize uh the 2 million kina or whatever that amount is that um when the government has the cash, they do give, but if they don't have then. Uh, but yeah, um I think that uh if we uh work together with the districts, uh we should be able to um manage a lot of our health needs as well. So I, I, I just wanted to add uh, add a bit onto that one. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Chairman PHA. Director, uh Director Corporate Services.
Thank you, Chair. Among the four in front, only two were right at the beginning of the inception of uh PHA. That's the CEO and myself. So if I start in the middle, I won't give you a true picture. So I'd rather go back to the beginning, how we started. Um, the corporate division looks after the system. What's happening now is the system, uh the processes, the practices, the policies were not incorporated properly at the beginning. That's why we are all over the place. Hmm. So we asked this question. Did PHA work right from the beginning? The answer is yes and no. Yes, because the technical people were still on the ground and they were providing services. Our doctors and nurses, they were still there despite the very challenging conditions, um both in the district and in the hospital. I said no because the PHA reform was not advocated properly right at the beginning. I ended yesterday with um my presentation. An organization is just as good as the people working it. So there is a memorandum of understanding we have to revisit again. The Governor and the Minister have signed for the province. What is in that memorandum? What agreement did they sign to insert the PHA into the province? The transfers of assets. As we talk now, Bogia Health Center belonged to Medeng Provincial Administration. It is not, it has not been transferred to Medeng PHA. So has all the buildings and the vehicles. That has not been done to date. The board was in place, that was very good at the beginning, but it disintegrated for some reasons. And then there was an autocratic type of leadership that happened. One man decision for some time. And then we had a new board and it's done well. It's uh, uh attended all the meetings we're supposed to have for the year. Now, when we started, we did not formulate because we have the Board of Governance. This is an entity that's, that has a Board of Governance. We must ensure that all the governance processes are in place. That did not happen. We did not have any corporate governance, nor the clinical governance, which is a very important uh group of um policies that will govern all our practices. So that we can look to the clinical audit under the clinical governance should a pa- patient die. Like you were asking about the, supposing if someone dies and a doctor would be taken to court, you know, all this. And then we will look at the corporate governance, financial management. There should be sound um financial management. If it's not there, then we are going all over the place and we are not going to manage the organization well. And so, um, we uh, we have realized, we have accepted the past years we have not done well. And we have accepted that with the new board in place, who is very supportive and the new management, we are trying our best to um get the governance in place again, so that every other thing will fall in line. I think um uh that is all from the corporate desk. Thank you.
Thank you so much. CEO.
Chairman, uh thank you on behalf of Medeng PHA. I take this time to thank you for taking this time to come and listen to us uh from your busy schedule. Thank you for giving us your time. Uh, much has been said. Uh, my issue now as uh Medeng PHA, I think I'll just reiterate again on the PHA Act. That Act is not well done. So it needs to be relooked at and all full mandate must be given to us in order to deliver. Otherwise, we will continue to face the same old problems. All these issues, I think we are well vested with what we can do and how we can fix ourselves. I think we are uh well vested because we have all this experience. Healthcare workers who have been in the system for so many years and they know where the flaws are and we can already fix all our systems. Uh, we need to get our Act relooked again and give us the full mandate in order to deliver. So long as there is red tape in Wigan, we will continue to roam around in the wilderness like Israelites for the next 50 years and we will not achieve anything. So uh my recommendation to you, my one recommendation is uh for the committee to take back and uh and relook at our PHA Act and give us the full mandate so that we can deliver. Chairman, that's all. Let me not bore you with so much. Much has been said. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you, CEO. Thank you for all your staff and both Chairman for making time to come before me. Uh, like I said from the beginning, this is not uh a, a normal inquiry because I don't have a quorum. My other colleagues have left due to some other commitments. So I'm taking this as a fact finding inquiry. I, I will have to take all these uh findings back to my committee. My committee will have to have a meeting and endorse this before I incorporate this report for Parliament. Um, what I've discovered in this last few days from Engao and then to here is that some real basic things we are not doing right. We are too busy doing things, you know, in our little space. And especially for us at the top management, uh the people down on the floor needs your constant uh interaction. That's, that's, that's what I see. A lot of things can be achieved, a lot. We, we can achieve a lot if we have this constant interaction with our ground staff and constant dialogue. You know, people are working on the ground. They want to know how much money is coming in to the PHA. They want to know how much money you spent in these respective areas. People want to know. If you keep this information from them, they will start to create suspicions. And when they start creating suspicions, then their mind is full of question marks and then they start to lose interest and lose hope. So I've realized that, uh there's a breakdown in, in Engao, there's a complete breakdown. Complete breakdown and it looks really bad. The situation is Engao is not good at all. It's not good at all. We are okay. Comparing what I heard here and comparing to Engao, Engao is in a much more worse state than Modylon. I can honestly tell you that. So I want us to improve on this. My only advice to you, senior management and the board, to have constant dialogue with people on the ground. Constant dialogue. They need to tell you their issues, every day issue. They need to share with you their problems. In that way, they feel that someone cares for them. So we can, we can do this. There are very little things we can contribute and we can do and we can solve a lot of issues. So that is my advice to you. Be transparent when it comes to money. You know, money is something that brings a lot of question marks and doubts and frustrations and all that if people don't know how you spend the money. You did the budget, it's gone. Money is coming in, where is it? This is basically what I've been hearing. Money come and go away. All making money. You know, you know now the sort, six years ago, it's been like that. So I want us to improve on that. The information must travel down to the floor. People on the floor are the ones really doing the work. They want to know. So this is my encouragement to you. Um, I'm going to do my best to help wherever I can in my capacity. But um otherwise, I am very happy that we've done this inquiry. I am fully aware now what's going on. I'm very happy as well with JPP and BPC. Uh, I've sat in those meetings. We've approved little things for our hospital. And just yesterday, we had another meeting and we've also uh put some money into purchasing some basic medicine. So this is a little way where the province is assisting. Uh, so you know, I can do my bit. Member for RAKOS, member for Sunka, member for Sino-Bundia, Mil Ramu, we can all do our bits. But we have to understand your problems. So it's a challenge to us members also, members of Parliament, to visit our hospital, to visit our, our big hospital. So we, you know, our, our people are coming in here for specialist medical uh care. So we have to come in and visit the hospital and understand uh the issues that you people are facing every day. So that's a challenge to us, which I would relate to the Governor and my other colleague, members of Parliament, that we have to make time to come down and have a look and see what we can do in our little ways to support the efforts that put in by hardworking nurses and doctors. So with that, um I'd like to say thank you all. Uh, you've missed out two days, mostly two days of your full duties and your responsibilities to come down and sit down with me here and we talk. But this is very important. I would like that MOA to be signed. Uh, my friend, our friend from the regional office, uh will be here. I will catch up with him and I'm going to contact you and we're going to come up to your office and we, we will sit down with you and we can talk about this MOA. I want this MOA drafted. I want it signed as soon as possible with PNG Power. So we've achieved something with what a board, what we can do now, let's do it. We don't just talk about it and leave it. What we can do, let's do it. So thank you so much, Chairman. I wish you all the best with your board. Uh, I'm going to do my best to make sure we get that approval, some executive order to utilize 15 million kina that's been sitting there for almost two years. So thank you very much. God bless you all. It's 25 past four and we suspend this inquiry.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.